Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 6, 2023 Regular Meeting of the Walnut Creek City Council. We are conducting this meeting under the current state regulations for open meetings, in which the city council and city staff are here in the city council chambers, and we will welcome public comment here in the city council chambers. We also invite members of the public to join us through a variety of platforms, but to also make public comments through our virtual platform on Zoom. And the webinar ID for this evening is 859-7194-0701, and the passcode is 091170. And with that, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the city clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Darling?
Here.
Councilmember Francois?
Here.
Councilmember Wilk?
Here.
Mayor Protem Haskew?
Here.
Mayor Silva?
Here.
We're going to open this evening's meeting with a proclamation. In September 1862, President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, which officially ended slavery for more than 3.5 million enslaved African Americans in the Confederate states of America. Unfortunately, the emancipation was tragically delayed in the deepest reaches of the Confederacy. It was nearly three years later, on June 19, 1865, that Union General Gordon Granger, on his arrival in Galveston, Texas, informed the people of Texas in accordance with the Emancipation Proclamation that slaves were free and had equal rights and property rights under the law. Since 1865, Juneteenth has become the oldest nationally celebrated commemoration of the end of slavery in the United States. Also known as Juneteenth Independence Day, as Emancipation Day, as Emancipation Celebration, and as Freedom Day, Juneteenth represents freedom and serves as a reminder that we must combat all forms of modern-day slavery, human trafficking, and racial injustice. To commemorate and recognize the anniversary of Juneteenth, I am honored tonight as the mayor of the city of Walnut Creek and on behalf of all of us on the city council to proclaim June 19, 2023, as June 19 National Freedom Day in Walnut Creek. Further, with this proclamation, we encourage all members of our community to reflect on the significant role that African Americans have played in our enduring quest for freedom and justice for all. Accepting this proclamation this evening is Mary Taylor, who is a member of the African American and Friends Club of Rossmore. And Mary also served on our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Task Force, and we really appreciate her for all the work she does for us in the community. And would you join me?
Okay. I know there's a two-minute limit, so I would like to thank the Walnut Creek City Council for this proclamation. Inclusion, recognizing the rich history and important contributions of all Americans, celebrating the humanity of all citizens only serves to make us stronger. It takes empathy and curiosity to know others, and we encourage all of us to practice both of these. So on behalf of the African American and Friends Club of Walnut, of Rossmore, and I also have some other residents here with me, they don't want to stay in, but we thank you so much for all you're doing for diversity, equity, and inclusion in our amazing community. Okay? Thank you.
So you still have a little, a few seconds. Could you introduce your friends?
Okay, sure.
Um, could you do it at the mi- could you do it at the microphone so that it gets, so that those on the, the millions on the television audience will enjoy it too?
This is going to be embarrassing because I don't remember last names, but we have Ray. Ray James, and she's a fairly new resident to Rossmore. She's also an author of mystery novels. And then we have Charles Etta Richardson, who has been in Rossmore about the same time as I have. She's an amazing member of our group, and we appreciate her so much. And last but not least, Annette Kazun. And Annette has been at Rossmore almost 15 years. So that makes her a little bit older than the rest of us, I think. So.
No, she moved in younger.
I truly appreciate all of their support and the work that they do in Rossmore and in Walnut Creek. And you were, you were, been a resident for Walnut Creek for how long, Charles? Seven years? No, in Walnut Creek? 10 years. Okay, so a total of 17 years. Okay, so maybe she's older, I don't know. But thank you so very much for this honor.
Thank you very, very much. Next on the agenda is our Youth Leadership Commission. They, we are so delighted you're here tonight to make some Presidential Service Awards.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. My name is Propdy Prudan, and I am the Chair of the Walnut Creek Youth Commission.
Hello, my name is Jolene Chu, and I'm also a member of the Youth Commission. Oh, sorry, this is me. For those of you who don't know, the Walnut Creek Youth Commission is a peer-selected group of 15 civically engaged youth, youth members within the city of Walnut Creek. The Youth Commission's main goal is to bring students together to get involved and engaged with local government through various projects and outreach campaigns.
Today, we're presenting two Presidential Volunteer Service Awards to youth in the city who have dedicated their time to community service. The President's Volunteer Service Award, also known as the PBSA, is a national volunteer award program that encourages people to live a life of service, offering presidential gratitude and national recognition. PBSA recognizes, celebrates, and inspires volunteerism, service, and citizenship in the community. Recognizing that our youth make a significant contribution to our city, our schools, and our community is very important to us, and the Youth Leadership Commission, along with the city council, are very pleased to bring these prestigious awards to two recipients this evening.
So I'm going to present the first recipient is firstly, we have Sidney Young, who is an incoming senior at Northgate High School. Sidney volunteers at John Muir Health Center, Medical Health Center, as a ship supervisor and acts as a liaison between students and volunteers and other healthcare professionals while also catering to the needs of patients and staff in various departments. She volunteers three hours a week to help hospital staff and patients with tasks including lab work, patient transport, and volunteer dispatch. She also volunteers at Project Light and works, works monthly with a local church to give out food, clothing, and essentials to, essentials to the unhoused population. She aims to connect the unhoused community by providing necessities to the community. Congratulations, Sidney.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you so much for this award, and I'm really glad that I'm able to help my community in a number of different ways, whether it's like in the hospital or at a church, helping the homeless or the unhoused population. So yes, thank you. I really appreciate it. Congratulations, Sidney. Okay, next we have Ivy Landlot, who is an incoming senior at Los Lomas High School. She volunteers at the Oakland Zoo as a teen wild guide and as a junior counselor at a children's summer camp called Adventure Day Camp. At the Oakland Zoo, she works with other volunteers her age to set up learning stations at various animal and reptile exhibits. At those stations, they play educational games with the children and answer questions about animals. She's been volunteering at the Oakland Zoo for almost two years and plans to continue until she graduates high school. She's been accepted to be a lead teen wild guide for her last year. As a junior counselor at Adventure Day Camp, she worked with children ages four to nine doing fun activities such as kayaking and rock climbing. She's volunteered at this summer camp for almost three years and plans to be a counselor this summer. Unfortunately, Ivy cannot be here with us this evening, but we thank her for her service to our community regardless. Again, we'd like to congratulate all the recipients for this award. Engaged and passionate youth like yourselves are the key, are the key players in making actionable and equitable change in our world. All of us on the Youth Commission are strong proponents of that, so we'd like to thank you again. With that, it would be great if we could do a quick photo op.
Uh, we'll probably stand.
Should we stand like on that side? Okay.
Oops. Tonight, we are receiving an update presentation from MCE, previously known as Marin Clean Energy. And I think it's Kiara Donato, the Community Development Director, who is with us.
Hi, good evening, and thank you Mayor Silva and members of the city council and staff for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name's Kiara Donato. I'm one of the.
Excuse me, we need you to stand directly in front of that little microphone, and you can even raise it up a little bit. Yes.
Okay. Is this better? Okay, perfect. Well, thank you again, and good evening to Mayor Silva, members of the city council, and staff for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name's Kiara Donato. I am one of the newest members at MCE, and I serve as a Community Development Manager here. And my primary role will be to serve as a liaison to staff, public officials, specifically in Contra Costa County. I'm really glad to be here tonight and share some updates from MCE's engagement efforts in Walnut Creek, especially as city council is in the process of updating the Sustainability Action Plan. And I'd like to discuss some potential partnership opportunities to help the city meet their goals in reducing green, in reducing energy-related greenhouse gas emissions. Just as a quick refresher, MCE is a community choice aggregation program. And what we do is we enable cities and counties, counties to purchase clean renewable electricity on behalf of their residents, businesses, and municipal facilities. The city of Walnut Creek is a member of MCE's Joint Powers Authority, and we've been providing electric generation services and customer programs to the community here since 2016. Okay, and then tell you a little bit about how electric service works at MCE. Essentially, what we do at MCE is that we buy and we build clean energy for our communities. We serve 37 jurisdictions in four counties across the Bay Area, including 15 communities here in Contra Costa County. This slide illustrates how that process works. As you'll see on the left side, MCE takes over PG&E's role of electric generation for customers, supplying energy from clean renewable source, power sources like solar and wind. Then PG&E will continue to deliver the electricity from the grid into customers' homes and businesses, maintain infrastructure, continue to address service outages, and send monthly energy bills, which will now include MCE's generation service. The end result for you will be that you have a choice where your energy comes from and the ability to access more renewable generation services. There are several state agencies that MCE reports to and is regulated by the same ones that PG&E is, for example, like CPUC and the California Energy Commission. But what makes a community choice program like MCE different is that we are governed by a local Board of Directors. Each city, town, or county that MCE serves will then appoint an elected official to represent their community. And our board meets monthly at public meetings to determine policy rate, programs, and administrative decisions for MCE. A familiar face that we have here is Councilmember Cindy Darling. Thank you, Councilmember Darling, for your climate leadership and for serving on our Board of Directors. Additional Contra Costa elected officials include Board Chair Skales Preston from Pittsburgh and Councilmember Quinto from El Cerrito. And just to share a little bit of our community focus or how we interact with the city of Walnut Creek. Over 33,000 customers are served by MCE here, and that's almost a 90% participation rate, one of our highest in our member service areas. Over 29,000 metric tons of CO2 have already been reduced using our services, and municipal accounts in the city opted up to our Deep Green Program since 2018. Deep Green is our program that's 100% renewable energy. And about 5% of the customers in Walnut Creek also participate themselves in the Deep Green Program. Okay, so now that you know a little bit about the customers we're serving in Walnut Creek, here are how residents have been using some of our programs as well. And considering, again, that the city council is reviewing the Sustainability Action Plan, here are some things the city is already doing to meet those goals. Over $63,000 in electric vehicle rebates have been dispersed. 24 EV charging ports have been installed throughout the city using our rebate program. In addition to our programs, we also like to get out in the community. And here are some of the events we do. We sponsor the state of the city, also sponsoring Sustainable Walnut Creek Sustainability Week, and we are members of Walnut Creek's Chamber of Commerce. There are a number of rebates, incentives, and resources available to the city that can help your community achieve its sustainability goals, and we're definitely interested in helping you receive that benefit. I also want to invite the city council to use MCE as a resource for more opportunities for community engagement or partnership with any community-based organizations that you may know of. And I also want to mention that one of the programs we have is the Strategic Energy Management Program. We've recently been in talks with some staff at the city about engaging the Walnut Creek Library there. We set our rates for electricity generation typically about once a year. All those rates are reviewed by MCE's Board of Directors and approved in a voting meeting. Again, this is a choice where the public is able to speak to, unlike PG&E. And we know energy costs have been historically high over the past several months, especially where we live, considering the weather. I think it's an important benefit of MCE's model is that we help ensure stable, locally-controlled rates. In addition to MCD, MCE's local rate setting, all MCE customers are eligible for a number of statewide bill-saving opportunities, one of which is the CARE Program or the California Alternative Rates for Energy Program. 10% of residential customers in Walnut Creek are already enrolled in the CARE Program, which gives income-qualified customers a 35% monthly discount on their electricity bill. Walnut Creek customers may also have noticed recently a $90 bill credit issued from the CPUC to help alleviate their high bills. And last but not least, just a reminder, when you use energy is just as important how much energy you use. An easy way for customers to lower bills is to be mindful of the 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. window, when energy on the grid is the most expensive. By running your appliances either before 4:00 p.m. or after 9:00 p.m., like your dishwasher or other large electrics, or precooling your house in the morning, customers can save a significant amount on their monthly bills. This slide will demonstrate a couple of our renewable energy projects throughout the four counties that we serve. But building on the theme of local decision-making, I wanted to highlight some of the local renewable energy projects specific to Contra Costa County. At MCE, we prioritize locally-generated renewable energy. As such, all projects over 1 megawatt within MCE's four counties are built with union labor and require prevailing wage. Several of the local projects near Walnut Creek that MCE contracts directly with, serve, to serve our customers include two solar projects in Richmond, one in Oakley, and two in unincorporated Byron. We're always interested in identifying partnerships for new local renewable resources to best serve our customers. And your dollars at work, so one of the main priorities as an agency is reinvesting back into our own member communities through the various customer programs, some of which are highlighted here. We've distributed over $2.4 million in energy-efficient rebates to date. We offer rebates and incentives to help our member communities meet their vehicle electrification goals, like the installation of electric vehicle charging infrastructure. Additionally, we now offer a rebate towards the purchase or lease of an electric vehicle at the point of sale, hopefully reducing that upfront cost burden. Customers can now receive up to $3,500 directly from participating dealerships. If there are any dealerships here in Walnut Creek that would be interested in this program, we welcome any suggestions. Last but not least, we are always looking to identify new ways to make our communities more resilient. Previously, we were able to distribute over 200 batteries in partnership with the Center of Independent Living to folks that needed backup batteries during some of the worst outages in recent memory. And finally, the power of MCE. The power of MCE is that it's a model that works. Since 2010, we have eliminated over 700,000 metric tons of carbon emission or equivalent, or equivalent emissions produced from consuming 1.6 million barrels of crude oil. We've been able to invest $214 million directly back into our communities through innovative programs. And we've supported over 2.8 million labor hours to buy and build cleaner energy to serve our communities. Thank you, everyone. This concludes my presentation. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have. And I'd also like to welcome my colleague Sebastian Khan as well for any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions, I'll start with our representative to the board.
I just wanted to say thank you for coming tonight. I think you did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
So thank you, and thank you to all of the members of the MCE staff and your very large Board of Directors, who were not all photographed there, right? Because I counted the.
Correct.
So it's 33 members of the board. That's a large board meeting to run. So thank you, and thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you.
It's now time for item two of our agenda, which is the Consent Calendar. We have a whopping 16 items on the Consent Calendar tonight. Does any council member wish to pull an item on consent? And I will pull item 2C. Any other items to be pulled from the Consent Calendar? Anything on, from staff that needs to be pulled? Which items do you wish to speak to, Jan? All right, so we will pull those two items as, well, actually, we'll take your comments right now.
Good evening. Thank you for buying the Pride flag and for supporting Pride Month. I just don't have, want a little clarification on the, these new patrol bikes, because I'm not up to speed on them. The curiosity is around the patrol officers. So you have three and one supervisor, you're going to add one more in the fall. Is that person, going officer, going to be moved from another position? And if so, which one? Do you plan on replacing the existing three bikes in three years? Is that six years kind of an average or typical life, you know, expectancy for these vehicles? And the other is, are the, are the officers assigned as patrol officers, that's, that's where they always are? Or do they sometimes, are they sometimes patrol cars or, or, anyway? I'm just curious about that and about the funds that often you have funds that are put away so that when it's time to replace them again, you have the funds there. And I assume that didn't happen because these are new, are new positions, so they need another, another couple of bikes. And on, oh, I just want to comment on happy to have the two zero-emission motorcycles, particularly for help with the problems we've been having in our, you know, outdoor space with people tearing through on their, on their equipment. And, and I was kind of curious about the, the maintenance, how much, it seemed like the maintenance for those big bikes are pretty expensive versus the cost to buy them. But at any rate, appreciate us taking care of our equipment and maintenance and officers so they can do their work. Thanks.
Thank you, Jan. And we will get the answers to your questions before we vote, before we vote. And I think we have some hands raised from members of the audience. So we'll, that are on Zoom.
We'll go ahead and bring in Scotty.
Good evening. Are you there?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You have two minutes. And which item are you speaking to?
Just public comment.
Oh, this is for public comment on items on the Consent Calendar. Oh, this is for public comment on items on the consent calendar. Do you have an item on this consent calendar you wish to speak to? Otherwise, I'm going to have to ask you to go back into the queue, and we will get to you in a few minutes.
I'll go back into the queue.
Great, thank you. So for the remain... Those of you who have raised your hands, please identify which item on the consent calendar you wish to speak to as you come on, and/or lower your hand so we don't...
Next speaker is Jeffrey P.
Good evening. Good evening. We can't hear you. Your microphone is turned off. Can you release it? Are we able to un-mic? Or is it... All right, let's go to the next speaker, and we can attempt to bring him back in.
Our next speaker is Alexander.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Which item do you wish to speak to?
Is the community... They're supposed to be allowed to speak to all of the presentations. Do you have a session for that?
Yes, it'll be under Public Communications, which will happen in a few minutes. So be prepared to come back. Thank you.
Okay.
If there are no others, then I will seek answers to the questions that were posed about items N and O.
Good evening, Members of the City Council. Jamie Knox, Chief of Police, and I have here Lieutenant Jeff Slater, who oversees our traffic bureau. Did you have a specific question?
There were about five questions.
I know, there's a lot in there. Well, I'll let Lieutenant Slater speak to the history of the traffic program and what the intention of the bikes are for.
So these are not patrol officers, these are traffic officers?
That's correct. We do have a designated traffic bureau. At one time, we had, my understanding is, eight or more traffic officers. When I took the helm as the Chief of Police, we only had two in the unit and a supervisor. A lot of the complaints that we get from the community are related to traffic issues. You can... I'm sure some of you know, as you drive through commute hours through the city of Walnut Creek, it gets very congested, and a lot of people complain of poor driving habits. So our goal is to grow our program, not to what it once was, but to something that we could sustain for years to come. But currently, we only have three motorcycles, so adding an additional three would allow us to support a traffic bureau of five personnel, that's four officers and one sergeant, for a sustainable period. And if you wanted to speak to the specifics of the equipment or talk about the Zero Bikes?
Good evening, Mayor Silva and Council. I'm Lieutenant Jeff Slater, and I'm currently the Fleet Manager for the Police Department, and I oversee, manage our traffic division. So the request for these purchases are twofold. Item number... Excuse me, item letter 2N is specifically regarding the purchase of some BMW patrol-style motorcycles. Those are so are our traffic division to actually go out and do traffic enforcement. They specifically ride these motorcycles that are specifically designed to help them catch traffic violators, such as speed violators, or people that ran a stop sign, ran a red light, et cetera. It helps them maneuver through traffic and has all of the proper safety equipment to help them perform their duties in the best manner possible. That is why we have the BMW setup. It happens to be the exact same motorcycles that the current traffic officers are using now, and we wanted to get them the same ones, so the unit would be uniformed, and there would be no issues when it came to training new personnel. In terms of the... In terms of just the history, we used to have a larger traffic division. I'm sure any of you recall. But as times changed over the years, we've had to adapt and move to other assignments, and obviously, traffic is not going away, and we're bringing this back so we can properly address these issues with our town. In terms of the Zero motorcycles, they are wonderful, zero emission. We had a pair a long time ago that were purchased as an experiment, if you will, to see if they would be good for the city, be able to expand to areas that we are not... A vehicle is not capable of getting to, such as parks, trails, and even when necessary for like a missing persons call in the line ridge open space. We needed to have vehicles that are available. Well, one of those is no longer with us. The battery life has expired, and the other one we have is near its end of expected life. So we've had the funds available, and we wanted to bring that back, so we have this very important equipment available for our staff. That's in a nutshell the history, trying to keep that under the two minutes. But I wrote down the questions best of my ability, if you'd like me to try to go and answer those. Yes.
It seems like you hit them all, but if you missed any, why don't you let us know?
Number one was the reassignment. That would just be once we had the personnel available and a motorcycle for that person to drive, ride, then we would be reassigning that. We're not adding an officer to our already... To our already number of staff officers that we have on deck. The replacement cost, that was a question, would it be done after three years? No, we have a very rigorous replacement and maintenance program. These are designed to be in service for six years. If they are doing fine, then we'll save money, and we won't ask for it to be replaced if it's in fine working order. Number three, I believe, was what are they used for? Well, we have... I think I answered that.
You answered that question.
Thank you. Number four, funds. I said that we happen to have money after doing a very stringent budget analysis, hence the request came up. And then the last was the maintenance service. We project the best that we can, what it would cost for tires, brakes, oil changes, and anything else that would happen with any vehicle. And based on this best guess, that's what we came up with, that number, so we're set aside. I believe that's more than... That's the shortest version I can give you for how we predict the maintenance.
So for the public, the lieutenant is looking at our Public Works manager who runs the fleet. So he has all the vehicles over there, including the street sweepers, the dump trucks, and all of your vehicles. So thank you. And I believe this is generally budgeted out of the ISF funds?
That is correct.
Not necessarily. It's separate... We allocate at every paycheck per person in the city the funds for future equipment costs, whether they might be a computer or a vehicle that they're using. So we set these funds aside over time.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions from staff or from council? All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for both for being here tonight. With that, I'm going to... I will take a motion for all items but 2C. And remember that item E and F have corrections at the dais.
Okay. I move that we accept Consent Calendar A, B, D through P, and there are corrections for...
E and F.
E and F. We have them on our dais, and so they are included in the motion. And have I gotten all my required information in?
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second to approve the consent calendar items A and B, D through P, with corrections to E and F. Would the clerk please give us a roll call vote?
Mayor Protem Haskew.
Aye.
Councilmember Wolf.
Aye.
Councilmember Darling.
Aye.
Councilmember Francois.
Aye.
Mayor Silva.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
I pulled item 2C this evening, as it is a resolution related to June and Gay Pride Month. From our residents to our visitors, from our business owners to those who work here, Walnut Creek is an increasingly diverse community. As a city, we recognize that our diversity is a strength, and we are committed to supporting the visibility, dignity, and equity for all who live, work, and visit with us. Our goal is to be a place where everyone feels accepted and welcome. As a city, we are particularly proud to have a diverse LGBTQ+ community that contributes so much to the enrichment of our quality of life. In recent years, the month of June has become a symbolic time for LGBTQ+ persons and supporters to come together in various celebrations of pride and the flying of the rainbow flag. The flying of the rainbow flag during the month of June symbolizes recognition and support for the LGBTQ+ community. To that end, the City Council tonight, with the adoption of this resolution, will declare the month of June as LGBTQ Pride Month in the city of Walnut Creek. And to signify this celebration, we are designating the flying of the rainbow flag at City Hall throughout the month. I move the adoption of the resolution. Second. We will take the roll call vote, and then we have a speaker.
Mayor Silva.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Haskew.
Aye.
Councilmember Darling.
Aye.
Councilmember Francois.
Aye.
Councilmember Wolf.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Joining us tonight is Christian Aguirre of the Rainbow Community Center of Contra Costa, who will make a few remarks. And I want to point out that it's through their Kind Hearts Program, Community Support Program, the center provides support services for LGBTQ+ persons who live in Walnut Creek, and that includes seniors and those who are living with HIV and AIDS. And thank you so much for taking the time to be here and driving through traffic and not getting hailed by any of our officers on...
I was worried about that one. Yeah, thank you for having me here today, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members, community members, too. My name is Christian Aguirre. I am the Toam Family Program Director at Rainbow Community Center, and one of the programs that I help oversee is a contract that we have with the city of Walnut Creek. Some of the services that we provide are housing for youth, services for older adults, HIV and STI prevention, youth programming, mental health services, and just different necessities within our community. So it's really important to be here today and also to get this recognition through the city of Walnut Creek. Being a resident of Contra Costa and receiving services as a youth from Rainbow Community Center when I was 14 has been very impactful to show representation and also give back through philanthropy and now my current job. So it means extra for me. I also want to thank you for providing visibility through hard times currently all over the world, especially Transgender Day of Visibility earlier this year here in Walnut Creek, and supporting one of the only LGBTQIA+ clubs, Club 1220 here in Walnut Creek, that a lot of our community members in Contra Costa rely on. I also want to share that there are multiple attacks that continue to happen to LGBTQIA+ members, specifically people of color, trans women, and drag queens. I know there's an event coming up on June 9th at the Leshore Center, and it is very alarming that this continues. And just, you know, I just want to encourage you to please continue to support nonprofit LGBTQIA+ businesses through attending events, volunteering, donating, of course. Funding is very fundamental for our community. And also attending our Pride at the Plaza on June 17th in Concord. We will invite all Contra Costa community members and whoever wants to attend. So thank you.
Thank you very much for being here this evening. And again, the Rainbow Community Center of Contra Costa is among the recipients of funding from the city of Walnut Creek for the services they provide, and that funding comes from the Community Development Block grant funds and other sources. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is public communication. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items that are not on our agenda here this evening. Under the Brown Act, the council cannot act on items that are raised during this portion of the meeting, but may respond briefly to statements made or questions asked. We may also request clarification and/or refer the item to staff. And consistent with our City Council handbook, we will allow 30 minutes at this time for public communications for items not on the agenda, and then, if needed, we will provide additional time at the end of the meeting. Now, just to be clear, the items that are not on the agenda are the budget, the City Council priorities, and the request for that we consider a general plan amendment for 1,200 Rossmore Parkway. So if you're here for any of those three items, this is not your time. So anything else, we are welcome to... Does anyone here in the chambers wish to speak to us on an item not on our agenda this evening? Please come forward. And if you... If there are more of you here in the chambers, please queue up in the line. We will allow two minutes for you to speak. And please introduce yourself and tell us what's on your mind.
Well, I will. Thank you. My name's Bruce Zealous. I live at 1943 First Avenue, and you are my neighbor, because you are the landlords of the Lindsay Museum. And I have to tell you, I absolutely applaud everything they do and what they stand for, but they are absolute horrible neighbors. I lived at that property before you built the museum there. And we had public hearings, public meetings about what was to be built, what was to be utilized, how it was to be utilized, and we did all that. And as you faced the museum, left is public parking, right was supposed to be just employee parking and entrance for like the hospital area and a quote "corporate yard." That's right next to my backyard, which is from me to you. Okay? I had them put in a seven-foot retaining wall with a door, because I used to have one to get to the park, so I could get to the park. Agreed to that. I have passed a... I have taken photos this week of the museum property. It is a dump. If it were my property, you would have code enforcement out there on me in a second. I've called code enforcement, no result. And I think... Are you Public Works, sir? Okay, and I'm not sure you got a lady that works there.
Sir.
Are you?
Sir.
Huh?
Excuse me. Me. Were you going to make your comments to the five of us? And please try not to point fingers across.
No, but I'm trying, because it's going to include them.
I'll find you the right people.
I heard you said Public Works.
I will find you the right people. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, we've called the City Manager's Office. I've called County Health Enforcement. What they've done now, there's been no public hearing, that I know of, to say, "We're going to enlarge the corporate yard." They are building a birdcage that's 30 by 30 by 30, an aviary that's supposed to be at the other end of the park for sick birds. They put a triage unit right next to my backyard, closer for me to you, for sick animals. We've had skunk infestations there over the last couple of weeks. I have to close all my windows, shut down my house because of the skunk infestation of foul odor and smell. Finally, I got somebody from Public Works Office to call me, some young lady, I forget her name, Elwin or something. She said, "I'll be..." I said, "No, please, come here now. I'll walk you through the property. I'll take you through my gate and show you what's going on with this property." She wouldn't do it. "I'll go look at it myself." I get no response from anybody. You are... You, and I say "you" because you're the city, you own that property, they are your tenants.
So you have had a two-minute limit, and your two minutes is up, but I'm going to refer you to the representatives from Public Works who are here this evening, and they're going to meet you in the lobby.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and hopefully we can resolve these...
This will not go unattended, I hope, right? You've got a series of...
We have heard you.
That I've taken.
We have heard you.
That are very explicit.
Thank you very much.
You are my neighbor, your landlord. You have a tenancy responsibility.
Are there any other speakers here? Please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Mike Mayman. I'm not a resident of Walnut Creek. I live at Bay Point. And once in a while, I come to Walnut Creek for a change of atmosphere, just like any other people from other cities. other people from other cities. And I've had some very bad experiences. Last Saturday, I was here and I parked my vehicle on the street right across here, and there was a food truck because it had kebabs, which I like. So I went and got a gyro. And I went ahead, it was dark, it was at night. And I went and sat on the bench, and I was eating my gyro. One of the Walnut Creek PD officers came and parked right across the street, which is high beam at my face. Okay? From what had occurred in the past, I took that as harassment, intimidation, racism, discrimination. Okay? Because I've had in the past, what happened was their buddies come when I was in traffic stationary, came and threw rocks at my face because my window was open. And then when the Walnut Creek police officer motorcycle came, I told him, go get him, and he refused to do that. That indicated to me that that was his buddy who's doing this. This is something that are occurring behind your back that is very detrimental to the public because I could go to the newspapers, which I have, and disclose this information, and then it's not going to look good for the city and the police department. I am originally from New York. I lived in DC, Florida. I've been to many other places. I have never crossed such conduct for, from any police officers, any, any other city except here. Okay, this is.
Your two minutes, your two minutes has expired, but I'm going to ask you to speak to a representative of the police department in the lobby because they're here this evening.
Okay.
All right? Because I'm not sure if you made your complaint the other, the other night when this occurred, but could you, could we do that?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Anyone else here in the council chambers wish to speak to us under public communication? Seeing none, we will go to Zoom. Again, on Zoom, you have a two-minute time limit, and we, the, your microphone will be suspended at the end of the two minutes. First speaker is?
Pete Bennett.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening, Mr. Bennett.
Hi. You're well aware of my complaints. I've complained since 2000. When was the first time I appeared? 2011.
Yes, I will affirm that.
Thank you. And I've probably spoken close to 50 times. About three months ago, I almost died in the hospital from a stroke. It was pretty serious. I was out cold for a week, in the hospital for three weeks. I drive an old van. Still runs. I've had my cars towed away here in Walnut Creek. I've had them damaged. I've lost a lot of money. I've made multiple requests for my police reports for things like assault and battery, where I nearly died in your library of an attempted strangulation, where the library guard broke my ribs, and it was still my fault. You know, I actually came up upon an arson incident where the Maria Maria Restaurant almost got burned down. I've been like a perpetual target. My attorneys have been killed, my witnesses have been killed, my family has been killed. I have nothing left. I'm on Medicare now, getting repairs for the injuries prior. How would you like to try to help me get some housing? How would you like to replenish my bank account? No, nobody helps. None.
Thank you very much for joining us.
Next speaker is Scotty.
Can you guys hear me now?
Good evening.
Hi, my name is Scotty, resident of Walnut Creek. I'm calling today to address some irrational statements made by certain council members who know who they are regarding the pro-white banners that they cried about on the news probably about six months back. I was just wondering why they think it's okay to, it's not okay to be pro-white, but if you're a Jew or a black, it's applauded. It seems every time whites express love for their people, some Jew wants to shut it down.
Excuse me, let's be respectful, please.
We don't have an issue of white supremacy like you guys like to push in your Jewish media narratives. We have an overwhelming issue of Jewish supremacy that is becoming more clear daily, even to non-whites.
We can terminate the.
Shut it down.
You guys cry about antisemitism.
Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Barbara Guinness.
Hello, my name is Barbara Guinness, and I've been a resident since 1996. But Mayor Silva, I'm not sure if you, did you want me, I had a question about budget from last, the May 15th meeting or 16th meeting?
We're speaking to budgets during the budget item, so this is for items not on the agenda.
Okay, so you're considering that an agenda item then?
Yes.
And I, and I would speak then after all the budgeting is talked about?
Yes, we will be, we will bring it forward at that time for public.
Okay, before the second consideration. Okay.
Right.
If I can attend, I will then. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Jeffrey P.
Next speaker.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Welcome back.
Nice. Thank, thank you very much, council members. I was calling as well to speak about the bias within the media and the council, referring to the constant white supremacy issues that we have within this district. No one's willing to address the fact that there's another group of people who are clearly shutting everybody else down that they don't agree with. And I just find it hypocrisy, a lot of hypocrisy within this council that they don't allow for speech to be said but they don't agree with. But according to the Brown Act and the First Amendment, speech is sometimes to be caustic or that we don't agree with. And I find it just abhorrent that you guys are shutting down people you don't agree with. No one's even using vulgarity or profanity. Just because you don't agree with what people have to say doesn't mean they don't have the right to speak. So what I was calling in to talk about was the fact that you guys need to respect people's First Amendment. You guys need to finish, allow, allow people to finish what they have to say and stop shutting it down. It's rude, and it's a violation of our First Amendment as well as a violation of the Brown Act. When someone says something you don't agree with doesn't mean that it's wrong or racist or bigoted. People have the right to speak, and I think that it's sad that this council doesn't allow for other people to have an opinion that doesn't suit that of which you guys have. You've created an entire group called Banjo. You've got a bunch of Jewish supremists that are shutting down anybody who doesn't agree with them, and it's sad. I really hope you guys reflect inward and realize that there is no such thing as hate speech, there's only speech that you do not like. So that's what I was calling in to talk to you guys about. It's okay to be pro-white, and it's okay to be pro-whatever you are. And I think that you guys need to really understand that there's nothing wrong with being pro who you are. No one chose what race they were born. No one chose who they are. You guys say it all the time. So I just hope that you, as council members, realize this, and you will respect people's First Amendment from here on out and stop shutting it down like you always do. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Next speaker is Alexander.
Yes, thank you. And I agree with the, with Jeff on that. The First Amendment has no exceptions for hate speech. The Supreme Court ruled in Mattel versus Tam in 2017. And actually, what the council just did, that's a First Amendment violation, and you could be sued for that. So my name is Ryan Misano. I am a real journalist. I am not a whore of the owners of the media. I am not paid to spread lies. For those who still have televisions, listen to the radio, read newspapers, and believe that social media and schools are telling you the truth, I'm afraid you're sadly deceived, and you must unlearn what you have learned. My website is misanonews.com. If you read that for two hours, you will receive more truth than you did in 12 years of public school as far as history is concerned. We have a very important issue to discuss. There are no exceptions, as mentioned, for hate speech. So it is very troubling that we have members of America who think they can silence criticism of their religion by yelling and shouting about hate speech and antisemitism. Every religion in America can be criticized, and if you don't like criticism, move to Communist China, where you are not allowed to criticize the government or other entities. The only people who are angry at you for telling the truth are those who are living a lie. And unfortunately, every single Democrat elected official in America is living a lie, and the Republicans are controlled as well. America is never voting our way out of this. The sooner we recognize that, the better off we will be. Lastly, let's discuss Memorial Day. America's founders were very clear. We should not have a standing military. The worst year in American history was 1913, when we got the Federal Reserve, the income tax, and direct election of senators. The next year, the bankers initiated World War I, and in 1917, America was forced into it with the staging of the Lusitania Incident. Right afterwards, America's standing military was created, and it was supposed to be temporary along with the income tax. However, we're over 100 years later, and there is no sign that the income tax and military are going away anytime soon.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Lev.
Mayor, before we bring in the next speaker, could I ask the attorney a question?
Sure.
If I could ask City Attorney to define the difference between what would be allowed for public comment at a City Council meeting versus what we would not, not approve of in, in a public communication format?
The Brown Act and the First Amendment do allow a wide range of speech, including speech that is critical of the government. If, if speakers engage after being advised not to in hateful speech, in obscene speech, in incendiary or threatening speech, then the council has a limited ability to, to cut off that conversation. Generally, as the council is aware, we let speakers express their view, in particular during public communications, because that is, that is what is referred to as an open forum, and that speech is sometimes unacceptable to a lot of people, but it isn't, it isn't illegal. The one speaker that had his time limited this evening had been admonished by the mayor and continued down a path that was inappropriate. But the council should generally, as you have always, allow the public to speak, even if they're being critical, and, and even if it is opinions that, that other folks may disagree with.
Thank you.
Last speaker, please.
Last speaker is Lev B.
Good evening.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening. You'll have two minutes.
Hi, I had a statement prepared, but I just realized that your Jewish council member would have shut it down, so I'm just going to recommend that everyone go to GTVflyers.com, and that they watch Europa, the Last Battle, at europathe lastbattle.net. That's all I have. Thank you. Goodbye.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Are there any other speakers virtually?
There are no additional hands raised on the.
The public communication is closed. Next item on the agenda is item four, council member and staff announcements, reports on activities or requests. City Attorney, do we have any closed session announcements?
Madam Mayor, there were no reportable actions from closed session this evening.
Thank you. City Manager, we'd look forward to hearing any reports you might have this evening.
I do not have one this evening, Mayor.
Oh, darn. Mayor Protem, may I go to you first?
Why, yes, you can. Thank you. So in my spare time, I've attended Contra Costa Transportation Authority's meeting, and we were, we learned about the interstate improvements for 680 Highway 4 and an update on smart timing for our countywide signals. There was a finance committee meeting rather than bore you all wait for the real report. I went to an accessible transportation, and we got an update on our pilot program that is in effect right now. We are working very hard to make transportation available for seniors, veterans, and the disabled that isn't just trying to get on a bus and then having changes buses and things like that. We're trying to find a way to make an effective solution to their problems. I was honored to represent the council at the employee recognition celebration, and I will say yet again, I am so proud to represent all of the staff of Walnut Creek. We have people who bleed for the rights and well-being of our community and go above and beyond, almost without even being asked. So I, I hope everybody can find an employee and recognize them and thank them for their work. Mayor, on the Memorial Day, you led us through a very touching reminiscence, reminiscent acknowledgement of those of Walnut Creek who served and who gave their lives for our country, and I, it was very meaningful. I also attended the CCA Planning Commission Committee, and we are learning about the A1 planning on State Route 4. They're going to do a big plan about State Route 4 and how it's going to look at, and this is supposed to address all sources of public transportation. If you conclude, can include walking, that is also, that's something that they're going to do. We, we, several of us went to the Contra Costa Mayor's meeting, and the topic was A3. And I would like to personally thank the city manager for doing a hugely important job at making what is a nationally, beginning to be a nationally recognized breakthrough on how to deal with mental health in your community. So thank you very much, Dan Buckshai. And last but not least, I remind people that the City Council is almost always at the farmer's market on Sunday downtown. My hours are between 10, which is the earliest you can expect me, and I beat it out of there by noon. So if you want to talk to me, you got to get there that time. You can check with everybody else what their hours are, but that's it for me.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I noticed that we're going to be talking about Vision Zero and the local roadway plan in the coming, maybe the August meeting. Do you think it would be good to have Contra Costa Transportation Authority give us a 10-minute overview the way MCE did this evening on the work that you're doing there?
Yes, absolutely.
Can you work with staff on, on that?
I will connect. Smedar and I all put it together.
And I'm going to turn next to Councilmember Wilk, but I'm going to ask the same question right up front, so perhaps Contra Costa Transit Authority can come make a presentation after the council, after Labor Day in the fall.
Separate from CCA.
Yeah, we, otherwise, we'd be here till, from August to September. to September.
They would be happy to.
That would be great. Thank you. What do you have to report for us?
10 to 12, Sunday hours, farmer's market. I'm with you. All right. Several things over the last few weeks. I was able to be with the Youth Commission on, I think it was their last meeting, a couple of weeks ago. And that was great to be able to see them. A lot of them have graduated and they're headed off to their college pastures. And so we look forward to a new Youth Commission coming in in the fall, or I guess later in the summer. I was also at the Walnut Creek Employee Recognition Event with Luella. And so our Mayor Protem and I were able to represent Walnut Creek and see the, it was amazing how many people are new within this city. And a lot of people don't think about the city of Walnut Creek as being essentially this large organization that's like a company. So we have those kind of employee recognition events as well. And some of the people have been here recognized for over 25 years, which is really a testament to loyalty and stability. Memorial Day ceremony was wonderful, as always. We were able to have our county supervisor, Candace Anderson, there. And I continue to hear about this from people well after the event that have seen it through our own social media and just really appreciative that Walnut Creek has this kind of an event that everybody comes to. The Art and Wine Festival, kudos to the Chamber of Commerce. I don't see any representatives here, but it was incredibly well-attended on, for us, a fairly mild weekend, not in the 90s or 100 like we've had in the past. So great to see that kind of community spirit come out for that as well. This last weekend, I also represented within the Clayton Pride Parade. And I bring this up because I'm proud that we're able to raise the flag here and have the resolution for Pride Month, as we mentioned. And unfortunately, as we heard about in public comments, there are hate speech that's out there. And no, we don't like it, and of course, we will allow it to be said, but this hate doesn't stop at antisemitism. As anybody that's in any kind of an ethnic or LGBTQ or a variety of different minorities, they know that hate speech will just move from one group to another to another. So I am more than proud to be able to show up and represent Walnut Creek in a pride parade in Clayton or anywhere else that anybody has any kind of ceremony about representing their groups. And then lastly, I am on the Board of Directors for the County Connection. And there's a couple of bills that are coming through that we were given special attention to. And actually, Mayor Protem Haskins probably aware of some of these as well. But just to let everybody know what's going on, there is a bill, AB 96, which is about autonomous transit. We're all seeing certainly autonomous vehicles in the media. And what this bill is saying, that if a transit agency deploys an autonomous technology, it must notify the union 10 months in advance and requires collective bargaining. So that's something that we should know about, that it's not just going to happen. These are the kind of things that will have to be notified ahead of time. And then for AB 316, any autonomous vehicle over 10,000 pounds must have an operator on the vehicle. ADA requirements and safety concerns without an operator certainly come to view on that. But again, when we hear about autonomous vehicles, there will still be an operator on buses, essentially. And I know that we've heard a lot about state budget. There's no new funds for public transit. And we've put, but we need to put together new accountabilities for public transit. And we hear about BART and the fiscal cliff that's happening there. BART's putting together an emergency plan to balance the budget without new funds. And if this situation continues in its current form, it's going to affect all the sub-transit agencies as well, like County Connection, ANLOFT, Westcat, Delta Transit, all of these feeders into BART. So this is not just something about BART that we're hearing about when it comes to the fiscal cliff and our concerns about what's going to happen to public transit. This is all public transit, and we all need to be paying very close attention to this and ensure that we're able to get the funds needed to continue a sustainable transit system and one that services the needs of the entire community. Well, that's a happy little note, isn't it?
Thank you very much. Councilmember Francois.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the Recycle Smart Board meeting on May 23, along with the mayor. And we were able to recognize, one of the highlights of the year for the Recycle Smart Board is recognizing the student scholars that get scholarships from Recycle Smart. We had two of them this year. Michaela Bach from Corondelet, who's a Walnut Creek resident, and Mary Lasca from Akalani's. And Michaela's project, she lives in a multifamily unit on Oak Road, and her project was to try to bring greater awareness to organics and composting to her development. She went around and handed out repals for all the residents to be able to put their compost in and put it in the green can, got the word out in her community, and is continuing to do that with giveaways for Walnut Creek. So I applaud her and wish her well. She's going on to UC Berkeley to study environmental science. We all, on the more substantive front, we talked about the, we have a franchise agreement which governs the collection and processing of solid waste and recycles and organics. Our current agreement runs through 2027, and we're looking forward to the process because it's a multi-year process of entering into new agreements with potentially new providers to provide those services in 2027. And the board unanimously decided, based on recommendation from staff, that we go through, that we separate the process between post-collection and collection. The thought being that the collectors would know where they're bringing the trash and the recycles too, so that that would be set in terms of the landfill or the recycling materials. Get that set first and then go through a competitive process to hire the companies to bring the materials to those places. So that was decided. We also approved our operation and reuse fund budgets. I was privileged to attend the Memorial Day event, along with my colleagues and Supervisor Anderson and here Patrick Leary's speech. We did have a public comment from a member of the public who said how wonderful it was and, you know, don't forget the families of fallen soldiers. And last year, we did just that. Mary Tolson, who's a Gold Star mom, talked about her son Ben at our Memorial Day celebration. So I think that was good to hear and something that we clearly agree with. And it was very nice to see the Veterans Memorial Plaza right here outside City Hall, re-spruced and reopened with some trees that are more native and will do better in our climate than the ones we had there. I believe I was the last council member to attend the Youth Leadership Commission meeting, but we might have to arm wrestle over that.
Okay, let's say we did it and move on.
It was a great event. It's always nice to reconnect with the members of the Youth Leadership Commission. They had a lot of questions prepared for me ahead of time related to kind of how I got into city council, you know, what I do during my day job, what are some of the challenges and what advice they have. And so it was fun to reconnect with them. And I thank them profusely for the work that they're doing and the change that they're having in our, positive change they're having in our community, including through a seat at the table. And I just finally wanted to share too, that over Memorial Day weekend, I went to the Reagan Library. And I mention that because they had an exhibit on the Holocaust that I thought was very moving and poignant and appropriate to mention tonight, especially given some of the public comments. And it was an audio tour that took you through the darkest days, essentially, and told the stories of resilience and people who are able to have, to maintain humanity throughout that process. And at the end of the exhibit, they were interviewing survivors. And what struck me were the survivors who said, "Don't hate. My advice is don't hate, love one another." And I think all religions in the world preach that. And I think we should all be well to remember that. And that is my report.
Thank you. Before, Councilmember, on Memorial Day, Mr. Leary's speech did acknowledge the Gold Star and Blue Star families, but also we honored the 11 Walnut Creek servicemen who were lost during the Korean War. And we did reach out and found, my husband did, using genealogy research, found the families and traced it. And two of them responded, but were unable to attend. So we would have had they been able to attend. Councilmember Darling.
Thank you. Like Mayor Protem, I went to the Finance Committee, and we will talk about that later. I enjoyed the Art and Wine Festival, and it was not blazing hot, and that was great. But the other things this month were the Walnut Creek Homeless Task Force. We're planning for the November outreach that we do, our usual, our annual public forum. And we're looking at having that forum focus on the difficult, the progress, the process you have to go through to build affordable housing, because I think many people have this notion that it's just easy. You just put out a tough shed and that's a great place for somebody to live. And so we want to help people understand that. We also want to help people understand the path that people have to walk to get off the street. Many of the people that are homeless don't have a driver's license. They don't have their social security. They don't have their marriage license. They can't prove who they are. They don't know how to apply for benefits and just the process that you have to go through. And so that will be in November. We'll get to that when we get closer. We're also, the Homeless Task Force this year is focusing on kind of collecting data so that everybody from the hospitals to the core team, to the HOP team, to the county folks have, know what each other is doing and know who they're interacting with. The other thing I did this month was really interesting. A number of the groups interested in conservation and sustainability got together and did a one-day symposium on implementing the Inflation Reduction Act in Contra Costa County and all the different ideas there. A lot of staff were there, taking diligent notes. But there's a lot of great things that can come out of that and ways that we can help turn the tide on climate change. So that was a good way to spend the day.
Thank you very, thank you very much. I had the ability to attend the May meeting of the Rossmore Golden Rain Foundation. And
Thank you.
After giving them an update, it was interesting to hear they've put a new security system in at the entrance to Rossmore, which is 10,000 residents, 6,700 units. And it's going slowly, but it's going to work very effectively in reducing the concerns about unwelcome guests. And we'll leave it there. Mayor's conference, thank you very much, City Manager, for your participation and presentation on the A-3 program. And perhaps we can find some time in the fall when the county can give us an update on how it's going, because they gave a great presentation last Thursday. The Mayor Protem and I had a quarterly meeting with our chairs and vice chairs of our various commissions and a few updates. Design Review Commission is working on the objective design standards, and we look forward to seeing those in a few months. The Planning Commission approved an expansion for Cali Craft out in the Shadlands Business Park. The Transportation Commission is looking at Vision Zero and the local roadway plan, and I think it will be coming forward to us in the next six to eight weeks. Park Record and Open Space Commission, congratulations last night. We got a plan. Don't have the money yet, but we do have a plan of where pickleball fields will be. And I thought the meeting was exceptional. Everybody listened to everyone and was respectful, and thank you very much. And I know you're talking about trails in a variety of places in the coming months. The Arts Commission talked about a mural that the new Crate and Barrel, the former Talbots, will have on the side of its building. The Youth Leadership Commission will be having a new class of members come the fall. And our library, our representative to the County Library Commission reported that the county is doing an audit of its DEI collection. Some things happening in the community. I really want to recognize the following. The Diablo Regional Arts Association, in partnership with the Leisure Center, presented its 2023-24 season, and it looks to be a good one. I want to congratulate the cancer support community for their ninth cancer support walk, which was held at Heather Farm a couple of Saturdays ago. They broke their fundraising expectations and had more than 1,000 people. East Bay Mud recently celebrated its 100th anniversary. It was at Lake Temescal, which is part of the East Bay Parks District. But they held it there because that was the first water source they actually had when they founded the district. The Walnut Creek Equestrian Center recently celebrated its 50th birthday. They are exceptional stewards of an area in Heather Farm Park. There are no horses living there, but they bring horses in, various horse owners bring them in for shows and events. Walnut Creek Aquanuts kicked off their summer season with their annual show at Heather Farm Pool. And many of the young participants will be heading off to Junior Nationals in the coming weeks. And I really want to once again remind everyone to say thank you to the Aquanuts for the funds they raised to help deepen the pool at Larky when we rebuilt it. Tickets are still available for the annual fundraiser for Trinity Center, which is a week from Thursday night, June 15. It will be actually at the Ruth Bancroft Garden, and it looks like it will be a lovely event. And the proceeds will help Trinity Center fund various services, support services, and wraparound services for those who are unhoused in our community. And finally, I will mention that June is finally here. We've been talking about it for months at the Leisure Center. They're sponsoring Fiesta Cultural. There will be numerous programs in the coming weeks, including Anna Navarro, who will be speaking, Arturo Sandoval, a preeminent jazz trumpeter will be playing, and there will be an all-day street festival on Saturday, the 24th. And with that, I'm going to suggest we break for seven minutes until 7:30 so that our budget and finance people can get queued up for our next item on the agenda. Fifteen seconds, everyone, please. Welcome back, everyone, to the June 6, 2023 Regular Meeting of the Walnut Creek City Council. The next item on our agenda is the consideration of our fiscal year 2024 and 2025 Proposed Operating Budget and Master Fee Schedule. And I'm going to start with the Budget Manager. All right. Good evening, welcome.
There we go, okay.
Oh, we can hear you now.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Silva, council members. I'm Katie Bruner, your Budget Manager, and I will be presenting the fiscal year 2024 and 2025 Proposed Operating Budget and Master Fee Schedule this evening. So tonight, we are asking for your council's feedback on both the operating budget and proposed changes to the master fee schedule for fiscal years 2024 and 2025. Today is the detailed look at the Proposed Operating Budget and Master Fee Schedule. To walk us through our discussion this evening, first, I'll walk through our budget calendar, both where we've been and where we're going. I will discuss in more detail the Proposed Operating Budget, which includes the General Fund, the Measure O Fund, and Reserves, and then we'll walk through the proposed budgets for the city's enterprise funds, changes to authorized positions, and then the changes to the master fee schedule. And then I will detail where we go to get to budget adoption. So, we started off our budget development in April with a Finance Committee meeting with a first look at Measure O, the Measure O Budget and capital budget funding. We've since presented a high-level overview of both the General Fund and Measure O Fund to your council. Your council received a presentation on the Capital Budget and Capital Improvement Program in May, and then we returned to Finance Committee on May 18th for them to receive an overview of the Proposed Operating Budget and Master Fee Schedule. We are here tonight to share that presentation with your council, and after tonight, we will incorporate your feedback into the Proposed Operating Budget and bring back the operating budget, the capital budgets, to your council for budget adoption on June 20th. So the fiscal year '24 and '25 operating budget allocates city resources on an annual basis across our various city funds. So before I go into what's in those funds, our city has multiple types of funds, and they all serve a different type of purpose. So, and these include general funds, enterprise funds, special revenue funds, internal service funds, and then our capital funds. While I won't go into all of our funds by detail, I will provide some examples of what these different types of funds are. So our general fund, which includes our general fund operating budget, our Measure O budget, and our pension trust are typically the least restrictive types of funds. They can be used legally for any purpose or designated by your council for specific uses. Enterprise funds, which include the Downtown Parking and Enhancement Fund and the Boundary Out Golf Course Funds, are for business-like activities, which typically cover their own costs. Our special revenue funds collect revenues that are restricted for specific purposes, and examples include our in-lu fee funds, like the Park in Lu Fund, or our gas tax fund, which we have used gas taxes for capital road repairs. Internal service funds collect funds from city departments for specific purposes, like our information technology fund or our vehicle replacement fund. And then last, our capital fund, funds our capital infrastructure program and is how we operate our capital budget, and includes longer multi-year projects. So tonight, I will be specifically going into detail on our general fund and our enterprise funds, as opposed to our capital funds or some of the other funds. So key highlights of our fiscal year '24 and '25 Proposed Operating Budget across all of our funds include expanded arts and recreation programming in the areas of recreation and social services, the Center for Community Arts, and implementation of the Leisure Center for the Arts Strategic Plan, funding for community outreach and community surveys, diversity, equity, and inclusion programs, which includes citywide DEI training of staff, city council and commissioners, funding for DEI, the DEI Task Group, Internal Rising Tide, the creation of a DEI analyst position, and placeholder funds for city council DEI initiatives, which were discussed by your council in April. The operating budget also includes funding for implementation of the Economic Development Action Plan, permit streamlining, downtown events and initiatives, as well as additional development review staffing, and funding for implementation of the city's Sustainability Action Plan, which also includes the addition of a sust, excuse me, sustainability analysts to help lead implementation of that plan. Further budget highlights include funding for homeless services and outreach programs, extra open library hours, parks, facilities, and infrastructure maintenance, which includes both ongoing operation and maintenance costs for park maintenance or facility maintenance, but also contributions from our capital budget and general fund for capital improvements to our infrastructure. Public safety funding for security cameras, crossing guards, police equipment, and the continuation of funding for police officer positions, and the addition of police services supervisors and a crime prevention specialist position, and then funding for risk and emergency management, which is expanded funding for emergency management planning and disaster response. So the city's general fund is the main operating fund budget for the city, and this proposed '24 and '25 general fund budget is projected to be balanced. After estimated contributions to reserves, fiscal year '24 is projected to have about a $700,000 contribution to fund balance, and fiscal year '25 will have about a $90,000 contribution to fund balance. General fund revenues are budgeted at $100.5 million in fiscal year '24 and $103.3 million in fiscal year '25. Our general fund revenues are approximately 30% sales tax, 30% property tax, and then 30% department revenues, kind of other revenue sources and interest making up the other 10%. Our transfers into the general fund include a transfer of gas tax funds for street maintenance operations and administrative costs from the Downtown Parking and Enhancement Fund. So as part of the budget process, staff take the time to review our actual budget structure and recommend changes. In this budget cycle, the general fund budget includes the following structural changes. The creation of a pension trust fund. So right in this, currently in this fiscal year, the city's pension trust currently sits as a fund balance designation within the general fund. So we are in the '24-'25 budget, we are going to create a separate fund for the pension trust to, for administrative purposes. Within the general fund department changes include the creation of a budget and procurement division within the Administrative Services Department, the movement of transportation planning from the Community Development Department to the Public Works Department, and then for this budget cycle, the movement of sustainability programs from the Community Development Department to the General Government Department. General fund expenditures include program and service enhancements, employee compensation and benefits, known contract and cost increases, inflationary costs, some one-time expenditures in fiscal year '24, and the general fund contribution to the general, to the capital budget. Transfers out of the general fund is primarily the general fund contribution to the capital budget, which is set of 2% of general fund reserves, but it also includes transfers out to the Open Space Fund and the in-lu public art fund. So the general fund expenditures are approximately 70% personnel costs, which includes regular and hourly employee salaries, benefits, and pension costs, and then 30% operating and maintenance costs. And operating and maintenance, or O and M, includes utilities, contractual and professional services, supplies, and materials. To touch a bit on pension costs, our pension costs, which include both normal contributions and payment of unfunded accrued liability, are projected to be about $16.4 million in the general fund and $18.5 million across all city funds by fiscal year '25. This represents about a 27% to 29% increase in pension costs from fiscal year '22. So some key highlights of our general fund budget include expanded and enhanced arts and recreation program, programming for recreation and social services, the Center for Community Arts, and the Leisure Center. This includes the addition of one and a half full-time equivalent, or FTE, positions, which includes a half FTE executive assistant to support the department, including the Boundary Out Golf Course, and a program supervisor to oversee marketing activities at the Leisure Center. And these expanded program offerings are offset by increased arts and recreation revenues. Diversity, equity, and inclusion programs in the general fund are the continuation of citywide DEI training of staff, city council and commissioners, internal funding for the internal DEI Task Group, Rising Tide, and the DEI analyst, as well as funding for city council DEI initiatives, public safety funding for citywide upgrades and integration of security cameras, police-specific crisis intervention and de-escalation training, increases for animal control services, police equipment, and then the reclassification of a records technician to a police services supervisor over the Records Bureau, and then funding for contractual services for in our Risk and Emergency Management Division, which is training for city staff, which includes exercise, emergency management exercises and drills, development and implementation of emergency plans, and maintenance and coordination of the city's Emergency Operations Center. The general fund budget also includes funding for the implementation activities, kind of the non-personnel costs of the cities, implementing the city's Sustainability Action Plan, which will be adopted later this summer, and one FTE for an assistant engineer in the city's current developing, current engineering division, community outreach and community surveys, parks, building, and fleet maintenance costs, which includes the reclassification of landscape maintenance worker positions to park maintenance worker classifications in order to meet more stringent regulations related to pest management, environmental and drought management, and technology improvements, which includes communication software and accessibility tools, social media monitoring, and a technical audit to streamline city technology and create efficiencies. So now we'll go into more detail on Measure O. And Measure O, as we all know, was a 10-year half-cent sales tax that went into effect on April 1st. A general use tax, Measure O revenues can be legally used for any purpose, but to facilitate the requirement for annual audits and independent citizens oversight that was included in the ballot language, Measure O funds will be accounted for separately from the city's general fund. So again, the fiscal year '24 and '25 budget is balanced in fiscal year '24 after contributing $9 million to reserves for future pool and community center costs at Heather Farm Park, and using $1.16 million unallocated fund balance for one-time costs. Fiscal year '25 is projected to have about a $1 million contribution to fund balance. So the Measure O budget is proposed with about $2.5 million in ongoing expenditures in fiscal year '24 and '25, and nine full-time equivalent positions. Fiscal year '24 also includes $2 million for capital projects, lighting at Tice Field, and the installation of turf, turf at Heather Farm Park. So the following will be funded with Measure O funds in the proposed budget. Funding for downtown events and initiatives, including strategic planning, a full-time core homeless services team. So one key difference between when we were last before you with the high, high-level Measure O budget to tonight is the city anticipates receiving a permanent local housing allocation funds in both fiscal year '24 and '25 to partially fund core homeless services. So we are still funding a full core homeless team in the proposed budget, but we are only using about half, funding it half with Measure O funds. There's also implementation, funding for implementation of the Leisure Center for the Arts Strategic Plan, which includes marketing hourly staff and contractual services, as well as an FTE for a program coordinator to support the Leisure Center Presents program. Measure O will also be funding 52 open hours per week at the Walnut Creek and Ignacio Valley Libraries, public safety programming and staffing, which includes five police officers for additional downtown patrol, the addition of a crime prevention specialist for coordination of crime prevention activities, including community outreach and education, and then a police services supervisor in the Dispatch Bureau, and crossing guard services at Walnut Creek Elementary and Middle Schools. And then the sustainability analyst to support and manage the implementation of the Sustainability Action Plan will be funded out of Measure O as well. So to touch on our operating reserves for the general fund and Measure O, the general fund has multiple reserves categories that are fully funded per your council policy, which meet or exceed GFOA's recommendation of two months of operating expenditures. The two-year budget does not recommend any use of emergency or pension reserves, and as discussed with the capital budget presentation to council, $9.9 million of the facilities reserve is recommended to be used for the design of the pool and community center at Heather Farm Park and installation of turf, turf fields at Heather Farm Park. And then additionally, we are recommending that the pension trust be moved into its own fund beginning in fiscal year '24 for administrative purposes, removing it as a general fund reserve designation. So as of June 30th, 2025, general fund reserves are projected to be $54.7 million, or 53% of the operating budget. This includes emergency reserves of $16.8 million and pension reserves of about $26 million. Our emergency reserves are about 16% of the operating budget, and pension reserves are about 25% of the operating budget. So the pension reserves include the Section 115 Pension Trust, as well as a PERS liability general fund reserve designation. Interest earnings and changes in market value on the pension trust balance remain in the pension trust and do impact its balance. pension trust and do impact its, its balance. And then other city investment earnings on reserve balances are recorded as revenue in the appropriate fund throughout the fiscal year. So for Measure O, as of June 30th, 2025, there will be an estimated $2.7 million of Measure O fund balance available, and then a total of $18 million will be reserved for future pool and community center costs. So to go into our enterprise funds, again, enterprise funds are for business-like activities that fully cover their costs, and the city's enterprise funds are the downtown parking and enhancement fund and the Boundary Oak Golf Course funds. So for the downtown parking and enhancement fund, fiscal year 24 is being viewed as a transitional year for parking fund revenues. This includes implementation of the outdoor dining policy, which is just beginning, as well as the anticipated completion of downtown utility work. So that being said, contributions to fund balance are projected in both fiscal year and 20, 24 and 25. Revenues in the parking fund are proposed to be about-
... as a rental, and then we'll probably adjust the contract that Lifetime pays to the city to offset that increased revenue that's going to that concession.
So we are considering equity-
Absolutely.
-across the racket sports?
We are, yes.
Had to find the right word there. Okay.
For sure, yes.
Thank you. Well, now open for public comment, because I know there's many people that want to discuss the return on investments, the, the fee structure and categories, anyway. Jan Warren, you're either running from the, for the door or you've got comments.
Oh, I have comments.
Okay. We are, we love your comments. Thank you so much for being here this evening.
Okay, Jan Warren from the Woodlands. Let's see, thanks to Katie, she's amazing, amazing. I've heard her a few times and I can't keep up with her. She's, she's, thank goodness she's in charge of all that. And Matt for answering, getting some of my questions answered, and to the residents of Walnut Creek for passing Measure O. Grateful for the positions with DEI and with sustainability. I'll try and go through these quickly. Question or clarification on the positions for the police department? So they added the crime prevention specialist and they removed the police records technician and then they got two new police services officers. So they have two. Is the, is this person who was doing technicians now doing the prevention specialist or, or how's that gonna work? And the other question I have, or topic of conversation is the, our police department, we added five some years ago before COVID with ARPA, and now I hear it's gonna be split or something, but, and we added two more to the police department. So we're up to seven additional from, I don't know, four years ago. And I just, ongoing, you know, how are we gonna pay for them? Because Measure O will end in 10 years. So I know y'all have a plan, so, or Katie has a plan. And maybe we'll just make more money, I, I don't know, but it's, anytime you put Measure O money into ongoing salaries, it's, it's just a question. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. Others who might wish to make comments?
Everybody, my name is Brandon Moran. I am coming to you as a vice president of the Community Arts Foundation. Thank you for hearing me, here, Mayor Pro Tem. I am here because I'm representing my fellow board members who put their time and their energy into supporting the arts. And that means we help raise money for scholarships for people to take classes at the Center for Community Arts, which I'm sure you're aware of. And the reason why we do this is because we believe that arts truly matter, and it matters to strengthening communities, it matters to personal development, and I was struck here, sitting here for the last two hours or so, in that, the reason why I do it is because I believe that if you can get to people with the arts, whether they be young teenagers, even aging seniors, you can teach concepts of humility and compassion and forgiveness and humanity, and I think that's really important, that's why I do it. I had a prepared speech, and this is not what I was gonna talk about. And in my short time remaining, I would ask you that when there are Measure O dollars to be looked at, that you consider funding the Community Arts Foundation. We've had a challenging couple of years in the last few years, just because of the pandemic and our, our donor base is aging out, businesses are less reluctant to, to give. So I respectfully ask that whether now or in the future, that you'd consider a annual donation from $10,000 to $25,000 to help keep the arts growing, our communities stronger, and our personal developments enhanced. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming this evening, and thank you for the work that you and the board members from the Community Arts Foundation perform. Does anyone else here in the chamber wish to speak under public comment? I will turn to the virtual environment and see.
We have one hand raised, John Livinggood.
Yes, hello, can you all hear me?
Yes, good evening, how are you? You'll have two minutes.
Thank you. Hello, Walnut Creek City Council, my name is John Livinggood, a resident of Walnut Creek for the record, and I'm the board secretary officer for the Walnut Creek Soccer Club, a nonprofit organization dedicated to promoting youth soccer in our community. I'm here today representing our club leadership and 3,000 members to express our heartfelt appreciation and gratitude for your plans to install new turf fields at Heather Farms, as well as the addition of lights at Tice Fields. These improvements will significantly enhance the experience of our young athletes and provide them with better facilities to determine their skills and passion for soccer. By investing in these upgrades, you are not only supporting our club, but also are fostering a sense of community and promoting a healthy, active lifestyle for our youth. We stand in solidarity with the city council in recognizing the importance of these projects and the positive impact that they will have on our community. We are excited to see these plans come to fruition and look forward to the continued growth and success of youth soccer in Walnut Creek. Thank you for your commitment to our community and for supporting the Walnut Creek Soccer Club.
Thank you very much, Mr. Livinggood, and thank you to the club for your commitment to raise funds to help us actually implement the new turf ball fields and the lights. So thank you and enjoy the spring season.
Thank you.
We have another hand raised, Barbara Guinness.
Hello, my name is Barbara Guinness, I've been a resident of Walnut Creek since 1996. I just walked in from outside yard work, and I think you're doing public comments, so-
Yes.
-on the budget. So the question I had, as I was at the 516 council meeting, and I asked a question about the open space infrastructure repairs budget for 2425, and I didn't really get an answer, so I thought I'd bring it up again. I, I want to know if the 2425 open space infrastructure repairs budget, the capital budget, is gonna be used again for expenses involved in the, exploring the possibility of a new multi-use flow trail in Lime Ridge. And then also in that 516 meeting, another question came up, because the director stated that environmental studies for the flow trail were paid for out of the operating budget, which I had never heard. I had heard from city staff like about three different explanations. One on the funding. One was they were gonna use grant 68 money, or 60, Proposition 68, sorry, grant money, but that was proved to be not the case, because it only could be used for Larky Park, not a, not something that you didn't apply for. And then the second time, the staff came back and said, okay, we can't use grant money, but we're gonna use open space infrastructure repairs capital budget. And now they're down to, as of late April, about $6,000. And then it was stated in the 516 meeting that the environmental studies will come out of an operating budget. So I'd just like to know, you're talking about the new budget for the next couple of years? Where are the monies coming for, coming from for exploring the possibility of a new flow trail in Lime Ridge, and how much is gonna be allocated for that budget? And I'll just also add, I appreciate all the work you all do for the city of Walnut Creek. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Guinness. Are there any other speakers this evening?
No additional hands raised.
All right, then we will close public comment and bring it back to the city council for additional questions, and then we'll get additional questions answered, and then we will make comments and provide feedback to staff. Councilmember Darling, any additional questions?
No additional questions.
Councilmember Francois.
I did, in regard to the Community Arts Foundation request or presentation, I was curious as to whether or not that had been presented to the finance committee.
When we get to comments, I'll tell you what we talked about.
Okay.
And I'll give you a historical perspective as well.
Okay, and then, looking forward to the teasers.
This is questions. You asked a question, that was fair.
Maybe if I could turn to the city manager and ask about kind of some other one-time or, I'm not sure how we characterize them, it is discretionary spending of outside groups, kind of how we've done that in the past, and what your recommendation or thoughts on it might be in the future.
Yeah, Dan Buckshai, city manager. Your council does periodically receive individual requests for funding. I think, you know, a similar parallel would be with some of our services through CDBG, some of the funding, some of the homeless service grants and the like, we have a set dollar amount, and there's a window period in which organizations can apply. And that way, the council can make an informed decision about the broader interests and broader needs, as opposed to handling one-off requests, because as we know, there's a lot of need out there. In fact, there's always more need than there are resources. And so in terms of considering funding requests, you know, very noble cause that we heard this evening, there are many others, if your council is inclined, you might want to consider in the future some type of a, a program along those lines, where you could open up, set a budget, open up a request period, and then consider the applications that might come in for consideration.
May I augment that with what we were doing prior to the Great Recession? The city council had a $75,000 general fund budget for this purpose, community grants, and they were operated in this manner absolutely similar to the CDBG. So community groups came forward with request, grant requests for specific projects, they were not recurring funding dollars. They were tended to be one-time, because there was no guarantee, albeit what happened in 2009, the budget had just be slashed. And when I was executive director in the library, for the Library Foundation in 2006, I brought forward one of the grant requests for a very small amount, most of the grants were for $5,000 to $10,000. And that, that program had to be eliminated because of the loss of significant amounts of money in the Great Recession, and it's never been rejuvenated. Now, what the Walnut Creek Civic Pride Foundation has done in recent years is basically fill the gap to the level of about $15,000 per year of community grants that is structured similarly to the, the old community grant program, civic grant program that the city did.
And they administer that program, we don't?
That's correct. They do fundraising for it, and then also residual sponsorship dollars from Community Service Day are allocated to it as well.
Got it.
And you want to know what we talked about? In the finance committee, you know, we had, we talked about the CDBG process and how a lot of the things that we're looking at could fit with that. And the CDBG process is in a holding year this year and next year, and we're all at a point where we don't really know how the revenue is gonna come in for Measure O. We do have a contribution to fund balance in FY '25 of a little under a million dollars. And so the thought was that would be a year where the CDBG program would be soliciting new grant applications, and we could keep it in the back of our mind that if we get to that point and Measure O dollars are coming in, in a way that we have that extra money come, or that, not extra money, the contribution to fund balance, it's something we could entertain in FY '25.
So that would be similar to bringing back the-
Community grants.
Yeah, bringing back something like that.
But it really was 10 to 15, 20, community nonprofits seeking funding, and it was, so it was very similar to the way the CDBG worked.
And like in the homeless task force, people have talked about, there's the bigger programs, but there's little things that could happen for homeless services that wouldn't cost much, that are community-driven, that we could get a lot of bang for our buck out of those kind of things.
Are we in comments?
No.
No, we're answering his question. Are your questions answered?
That was as comment-y as I get.
Fully satisfied with the answers to my questions, thank you.
And I was-
Mayor Pro Tem.
I was gonna congratulate the people who came here and reminded our community that there is a mechanism to help students get that access to arts, and I encourage you to sometimes come and remind us during public comment, if you ever have a fundraising thing or something like that, because it essentially, we have the programs because we value the programs, and you're making it available to the people that really need it, so, thank you.
Did you have any additional questions?
No, I used my brain on that.
I don't have any questions, so we'll just hold it at that for now.
All right, so I'm gonna call first on the mayor pro tem to make comments to staff, and then councilmember Darling, since you're the representatives from the finance committee, and then may circle back to you based on any comments that the peanut gallery has here.
So it's my job to start. First of all, I want to congratulate the staff and Katie and everybody else that helped her, that this was, I think, the clearest presentation of our budgeting process and how it goes together. So that went a long way to helping everyone understand what the, the situation is and what we're dealing with. My other comment is, we're not gonna be as rich as we used to be, and so when we're looking at the budgets, you know, like, we, we used to have 3 million or so at the end of the year. If we, if we, if we are very careful, we're gonna exceed our budget amounts of reserve, additional, excuse me, revenue accesses, but not by much. And so everybody has to be aware that this isn't, this isn't bank night anymore. That was, I, that was the message that I got out of this exercise. And finally, thank you so much for cleaning up that blasted master-
What's the rest of the word?
-fee schedule, and took out all the archaic things that we were carrying forward and made it the modern piece of information that it is. I think it's far more approachable to not only the staff, but the public who will be using it in the future.
I'm done. Thank you. Councilmember Darling.
I too want to say thank you to staff. They, I mean, as a newbie on the finance committee, they walked me through it, and it all made sense. I felt as if the Measure O dollars especially were done very intentionally and addressed the issues that the public brought forward to us as we asked them what they, what they want the money spent on. And I think the staff did a good job on leveraging things like the PLHA to, you know, help with the core services. I know we've talked about this in the finance committee, but I think Jan did bring up a point that we are going to need to keep our eye on. We have, this is not one-time money, and it's not forever money, it's 10-year money, and we have to be ready at the end of that 10 years to deal with the end of the 10 years. I do wanna, I don't wanna, as far as what we do with the idea of a community grant program, I would like to see that come into place, but I think it's something that we need to keep our eye on, we need to see how the money's coming in. We need to see how the money's coming in because as Mayor Pro Tem indicated, we are in a little bit of an odd financial time. You know, one minute everybody's, it's going to be great and the next minute it's going to be a recession. So I would like to keep our eye on it and reserve that possibility for FY '25.
Councilmember Wilk.
Thank you. Well, I, overall, I like the budget. I think that this was easy to digest, even just reading through the report prior to coming here tonight, but thank you for everything on the elucidating of it. I tend to be, when it comes to the Measure O discussions and groups coming, whether it's nonprofit groups, I mean, the Community Arts Foundation, I mean, I was an actor, arts is my background, I was on the Arts Commission. And even with all of that, I look at Measure O as being these funds that the people, that the residents voted on specifically with a straight line to the ballot statement. And so I want to make sure that that is specifically when it comes to infrastructure, public safety, and the areas that were illuminated, that went out to the public. And so when it comes to looking at any of these kind of grant funds from anybody, I would look at that more to be within the general fund. And if we have the money within that to be able to continue on annually, terrific. If there is a line that can be drawn from Measure O to why that would be something where the funds should go toward, I can understand that as well. But my concern here is if we start looking at Measure O as, oh, well, here's a group that needs it, here's a group that could use funds, here's the group that could use funds, we get away from what Measure O was voted on. And I think that we as council members owe that to the voters and the Walnut Creek community to hold fast and tight to what Measure O was designed for. That said, I certainly agree with the budget as presented.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilk. Councilmember Francois.
Just echo the thank you to staff for making this very easy to understand and digestible. And applaud staff and our colleagues and predecessors for, I think we're supposed to have $20 million in reserves and we have 53.3 million, so that's impressive and recognized. And I'm looking forward to some of the additional police officers that we're getting, the crime prevention specialists especially, and seeing what an impact that can have kind of in our neighborhoods and downtown. Let's see. I thought everything was explained very well in terms of the, personally, I do like the idea of resurrecting the community grants program. I think it does make sense to wait for a year. Whether we do it through the general fund or through Measure O, I think we could tie the, you know, connect the dots between arts and Measure O because I recall that that was one of the items in the Measure O ballot language, but maybe we do it through the general fund to have more flexibility and not cut off nonprofits from being able to be eligible for that funding. So, I like that idea. I think it, I do think it makes sense to wait for a year to see, because the Measure O funds do impact our budget. And would just reiterate what the Mayor Pro Tem said about, if you're having a fundraiser, let us know because likely we'll all be there. And we'll put out the word to the community as well. And thank you for what you're doing because it makes a difference in a lot of people's lives and I appreciated what Mr. Moran said about arts enriching people's lives and adding to all of our collective humanity. So with that, I'm happy with the direction that the budget's going and looking forward to seeing it back on the 20th.
So I will do the wrap-up. Thank you to staff and all of the departments because you're working on this with staff. Doesn't that the Budget and Finance Department figure it out all by themselves and et cetera? You're inputting and feeding into it. I realize before I start that Ms. Warren didn't get her questions about the staffing in the department, but perhaps Chief, you can do it post this meeting because it, there's a complicated shuffling and I don't think the same, anyway. I would not answer that question, but if you can, thank you. I think this budget reflects the priorities of the community and the priorities that we have set as a council, so thank you to that. And it's been a while that we've been, since we've been actually able to do that due to the COVID crisis, et cetera. I also appreciate what it takes to create a budget in which you are doing a general fund budget and a Measure O budget and then merging them together because I appreciate that we made a commitment to the community as part of the passage of Measure O, that we would keep careful track of the funds coming in and the funds and how they would be spent. And in order to do that, you have to set a budget that basically does that. And now we can audit against the budget, so I appreciate that. I think what Ms. Warren said and my colleagues have said, that we are mindful that of $12.5 million a year that we'll be taking in in Measure O funds, 9 million of those are being set aside for one-time dollars, so we're not overextending ourselves into ongoing funding. But we do have to be mindful of what happens if. And on that note, we have to be mindful of the November 2024 election and the threat of the California Business Roundtable to try to take it all away. So I would be hesitant to get overly excited for the 2024-25 budget cycle because if it disappears, we have to figure out what to do. But first and foremost, we have to fight like heck to not have it disappear. And because I would love to bring back the community grant program, that was, that was the happy times. And I also appreciate that our reserves are healthy, but we're not wealthy. And I think we're going to have to probably invest a little more in the pension trust because there's a lot of pressure on the CalPERS board, not only from the market, but also from those who would advocate for divestiture in certain investments and that causes the CalPERS assets to underperform. And CalPERS is not in favor of that, but the state legislature does not seem to be listening to the pressure. So, that could also be a push that's happening. And so I am very, I think this budget addresses our priorities and our opportunities. So thank you. And we did this in just three minutes over an hour, so we're going to do it in 30, well, we have to do the capital budget on the 20th too, but at that time, we'll merge some questions probably about what's the capital budget pay for versus what does the general fund pay for? And that's, for those of you, hint, hint, public works, be prepared. All right, thank you very much. Did you need a, you don't need a motion, do you? I wouldn't know what, I wouldn't know what the motion should say.
No, it was just requesting feedback.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm going to give us a five-minute standing break just because we've been sitting here. So we will be back at 8:40. Good evening and welcome back to the June 6, 2023 regular meeting of the Walnut Creek City Council. The next item on our agenda is an update on our City Council 2023-2024 Priority Scope of Work. Too many numbers in titles, budgets, you know. Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor, councilmembers, members of the public, I'm Carla Hansen, I'm the deputy city manager. No shortage of information in this presentation, but less numbers, which is good for you and me. So, let's get this started. So in February, you all set priorities for the next two calendar years and these are your five priorities. They look a little similar to the last two years' priorities and that's because we still have work to do on these five. And so this evening, I'm going to be walking through staff's proposed scopes of work for each of these five on the new work that we're proposing. We've got a lot of continuing work, we've got a lot of new work, and then you all heard what we've completed on these five in last October. So we're going to be talking about new and continuing work this evening on these five. I'm going to go through each priority in its entirety and then at the end, we'll have questions. And although I'm the sole presenter this evening, there is not a shortage of staff here to answer questions about all of the good work that we're going to be doing on your priorities in the next two years. So diversity and equity and inclusion remains a priority for '23 and '24. And as you heard through the proposed budget, we do have a focus and a commitment with funding for DEI. And that was something that the council in April signified that they did want an ongoing commitment to DEI efforts. We're going to be doing that through a new DEI-focused position, which you heard about already from Katie, the budget manager, earlier. And this person's going to be really responsible for the technical parts of DEI, which is researching, developing and implementing our training programs, our policies, and really managing and partnering with our Rising Tide, which is our internal DEI task force, to help really bring about the culture that we want in Walnut Creek, which is a welcoming and belonging culture in our organization. We're also going to be focusing on ongoing training for all city staff. That's city staff, that's council, that's our commissioners. And we're, our human resources department is going to be running our training program and partnering with, partnering with Rising Tide to really develop a foundational type of training and make sure that all of our new incoming employees are all getting that foundational training as, as we go. For our city commission and committee representation, the goal of this work really is to implement long-term solutions to support a more equitable participation across the city. And we're going to be doing that through really seeking to broaden and diversify our pool of candidates for our commissions and committees. And what we're going to be doing is really seeking feedback and insights on equity and inclusivity, efficiency and transparency from our existing commission and committees and really looking at the processes that we go through to recruit. And then this feedback's going to be vital into considering what specific challenges we're facing currently and what can we do to overcome them and really get to that point where we do have a broad, diverse representation of our community on our commissions and committees. We're going to be focusing on integrating DEI into all of our city communications. As we all know, the city uses a variety of platforms to communicate with the community, including these types of meetings. And sometimes we can be a little formal and it doesn't feel welcoming or you don't feel like you understand what the heck we're talking about sometimes, thinking about government acronyms and things like that. So we're going to be looking at doing an audit of all of our city communications. What's working well? What can we improve? Where are those gaps? Where are we missing people? One example of this is our website, which is really geared towards people who understand the structure of our local government, but maybe not, they, what they're really looking for is like, how do I get that service? How do I access that program? So we really want to look at our communications as a way of, from a customer perspective. How are we really getting to our customers? How are we showing them what we do? And doing that in an inclusive way. For cultural events, we do have a lot of offerings as we heard this, this evening from our Library Foundation is doing a bunch of events, our Leshur Center and our arts and recreation programs are, we're expanding those events to really be culturally sensitive and culturally inclusive of different things that are going on in the community. And we're going to be also continuing to use our city facilities to offer events and event space to continue doing those types of community events. Through our Rising Tide team, which I mentioned, is our internal team and they are focused on really advancing a culture of inclusion and belonging in our organization. And they're doing that to, by ensuring diverse perspectives and backgrounds are represented and respected in the workplace. And this work group has established a couple of priorities that I'll tell you about this evening. One of them is a chosen name policy, which is allowing employees to be recognized through city systems and platforms by their chosen name rather than maybe when it differs from their legal or their birth name. Also reviewing city policies as they're developed to ensure that we're looking through our policies from a DEI perspective and through a DEI lens. And then also ensuring that our language translation is widely available and used among city employees for interaction with our residents, visitors and business. for interaction with our residents, visitors, and businesses. And finally, we're going to be partnering with our libraries to share a diverse range of DEI-focused book collections. We heard this evening that they're doing an audit of their collections, their DEI collections. So we're going to be working with them to help share what book collections do they have? How can we help promote those things throughout the city? So that is DEI. And I will move forward to the economic development and job creation priority. And this priority has four components, so I'll go through each one separately. You heard a presentation on May 16 from our Economic Development Team on their Economic Development Action Plan. And the goals of this, the plan really has 12 strategies with the goals of growing our office and retail base, increasing the number of jobs in the city, supporting and growing our robust healthcare and auto industries, exploring emerging industries that may want to come to Walnut Creek, and then working with our internal and external partners to ensure that we have a business-friendly policies and practices. So the council gave feedback to our Economic Development Team on the plan, and that feedback's going to be incorporated into the plan. And then our team is going to be working with our partners that you see on the screen here to really understand how they fit in to the economic development plan, what they can do to help support some of those actions. And then we'll be updating you on the progress of that plan quarterly with this council priorities update. Moving on to improved jobs-housing balance. As we were thinking about this priority, in this area of this priority, we realized we don't actually have a definition, a technical definition, of a jobs-housing balance. And so staff is proposing to really focus on how do we get to, we know we're a strong job center, but how do we make sure we have a strong job base, and we have people who can live here and work at those jobs so they don't have to commute out of the city? So we're going to do that through analyzing our current jobs-to-housing ratio and defining what is an ideal balance for a community like Walnut Creek, evaluating our acreage that's dedicated to residential and retail and office property, and then evaluating what does future growth look like in our projected population growth, but also in our office and retail and residential basis. So we'll be bringing back that definition for your input as we go through our council priorities update. For permit streamlining, our goal is really to create an easier and more efficient way for our customers to access our processes through our permit center. And we're going to be doing that specifically through really having city staff serve as a proactive guide through our processes, and really looking at it from both an online and in-person services. So currently, we do have, through COVID, we were able to offer online services because we had to. People couldn't come down to City Hall and get a permit. So we're going to be evaluating our current processes, including stakeholder feedback and customer feedback, to really determine what processes are working well, what are really need improvement, and then what stages during those processes are really challenging? Where can we improve those things? In addition to that, we're going to be working on a couple of things that the state is mandating us to do, which includes offering solar permitting online, which we have to do by September 30, as well as being able to accept electronic submittals online as well, and that we need to do that by the end of this calendar year. So we're going to, there's a lot of work in permit streamlining, and we're going to be doing that over the next, in earnest, over the next couple of months, and then certainly through the end of the year, as well as really evaluating our permitting as a whole and understanding where those gaps and where those improvements can be made. Thinking about our downtown and really enhancing downtown as a place of, a sense of place where people want to work and live and shop, and we've got a lot of things going on downtown. We've got infrastructure, we've got safety, we've got maintenance, we've got streetscape, we've got outdoor dining, we've got public art, we've got events. And then we have a lot of business processes that go on with this. And we really want to work with our downtown partners to develop an integrated action plan that coordinates all of these things at once. So we're all working together as a staff and with our downtown community to make sure that we're approaching these improvements in a coordinated and really integrated way. Environmental Sustainability and Action Plan, this has been a priority for you all for the last several years, and we've been in the process to update our Sustainability Action Plan since 2019. We hit a major milestone in April where the draft plan was released to the public, and we've been accepting feedback on the draft plan, we've done a survey, we've gone out to the Community Earth Day event and had a workshop to really create awareness about the plan, what's in the plan, gather feedback about the plan. And we're going to be bringing all of that to you for your feedback on June 20. We'll also be bringing back a draft climate emergency resolution on the 20th for your feedback of what should be in that climate resolution. And then I think something that's been mentioned to the public, by the public, a few times is, how are we going to implement this major plan that we have to implement? We've got to reach these goals. And as you heard this evening, there is a proposed position, an environmental sustainability coordinator position proposed in the 24-25 budget. So once the plan is adopted, we're going to move right into implementation in that position. If approved, would help us do that. So for parks, facilities, and other infrastructure, the focus here is our Measure O infrastructure projects. So as we all know, 65% of the Walnut Creek voters approved Measure O for funding for a multitude of things, but some critical infrastructure projects are included in that funding. One of those is our Heather Farm Aquatics and Community Center. So we're going to be focused on that for the next couple of years. Progress made so far, we've hired a project manager and a CQ consultant to start the work on the project. You all will be hearing, council, we're going to be asking for your feedback on a community outreach strategy coming in July at a July meeting. And then, I believe, tomorrow? Yeah, tomorrow, we'll be interviewing potential architecture firms to help design the pool and aquatics, sorry, aquatics center, community center. We have to have a name for that. So we're going to be in the design phase. Once an architect is hired, we're going to be in the design phase for about a year. And then construction will begin probably in 2025 and completed in 2027. The other infrastructure projects that are funded by Measure O that we've heard about again already this evening is the lights at Tyse Field. So we're projecting to go out to bid for that and really begin construction in spring and summer of 2024. And then the ball fields at Heather Farm Park, we're estimating to complete those in fall of 2025. So there's a lot of infrastructure work going on in this priority, and this will be, these three projects are really going to be the focus of this priority over the next two years plus. So public safety and social wellness, there are five components to this priority, and again, I will go through each one separately. As we've heard this evening, Walnut Creek has been very instrumental in the A3 program. And I think what we don't often talk about is like, really, we know what it is. It is access to behavioral health crisis services anytime and anywhere. And what that really means is you can call the Miles Hall Crisis Center and get someone to talk to. You can get someone to respond if you need it, and you could get some help with a place to go that maybe, that isn't jail. It is really focused on services to really help you get through a mental health crisis. So as we know, our city manager was one of the founding Steering Committee members for the A3 program and continues to be involved in this program. And our police chief is also working with, standing up a county-wide protocol for dispatching calls and getting memorandum of understanding between agencies for the A3 program. So a lot of Walnut Creek representation for this really impactful and nationwide, soon-to-be nationwide copied program. So our Walnut Creek Police Department manages and participates in several programs dedicated to responding to mental health challenges and connecting folks to homelessness services. Some of these challenges often overlap, and so these programs really try to address these issues in a holistic way. So we partner with the, our police department partners with the Martinez and Pleasant Hill Police Departments to improve each agency's ability to respond to mental health crisis within the region. And we support this program with three officers and a sergeant. And these folks are specifically trained in de-escalation and crisis response and are available to respond within our region at any time. We also work with, the city funds, as we know, and we're proposing to continue to fund at a full-time level, the Contra Costa Coordinated Outreach Referral and Engagement Program, CORE, our CORE team, which serves as an entry point into Contra Costa's coordinated entry system for unsheltered folks and really works to locate and engage and referral and find housing for our chronically homeless folks and families. And so these outreach teams identify individuals in unsheltered conditions, assess their housing needs, and facilitate connecting them to shelter and other services. And that CORE team works with our Homeless Outreach Program, or HOP, team, which consists of a sergeant and two officers. And these folks are really out there on the street, building relationships with our homeless community to help them get to services, to connect them to CORE. Of course, enforce laws where appropriate, and work with our residents and businesses to address the quality of life issues that are related to homelessness in our community. So the next two slides I'm going to talk about are approaching crime in a way to prevent crime before it happens. And we're going to be doing that through using data, and we're going to be doing that through building partnerships. So we'll talk about the data first. So this is, Walnut Creek developed and implemented a direct patrol response program, which is a tactic to prevent crime before it happens. And this is through analyzing crime trend data and proactively adjusting our patrols to get to that crime before it happens. So this data consists of crime, obviously, crime data, complaints of crime, reports of suspicious activity, are inputted into a mapping program, and then they're able to say, okay, we've got these, we've got these services, we've got this data, how are we going to best deploy our patrols? And this is a proactive, a best practice in proactive form of policing. The police department is also exploring new technology for intelligence gathering and sharing platforms in order to improve investigation outcomes and sharing cross-departmental, cross-jurisdictional coordination. And on the preventing crime through partnership side, this is the new crime prevention specialist position is proposed in the 24-25 budget that we heard about earlier today. And this is, the police department's going to be using this specialist position to develop a formal crime prevention program with a focus on community policing, which allows officers to create a stronger bond with people living and working in their patrol areas. And they're going to be using, they're going to be using best practices to build this program and really build on the existing partnerships that we have with the community and continue some of the events that we already participate in, like Coffee with a Cop and National Night Out. Fostering a modern and healthy police culture is a focus of our police departments. And they're going to be doing this through implementing an active bystandership, excuse me, law enforcement program, ABLE program. And this really aims to create a police culture which officers routinely intervene and accept intervention to prevent misconduct, avoid police mistakes, and obviously promote officer health and wellness. And another thing that they're going to be doing is implementing the Swear Not to Swear campaign. So this is making sure we're acting professionally in the community and not saying bad words, for lack of a better word, to really, again, show that we're the utmost professional, we're using the utmost professionalism in our police department and really fostering that healthy culture. So we are going to be working towards improving our traffic, transit, and pedestrian and bike safety with the goal of providing a way for all residents and visitors to get to their destination in a safe and comfortable manner. One of the main ways we're going to be doing that is adopting a local roadway and safety policy plan. It's a plan, which you will be seeing in July. And what this plan does is really helps identify and estimate and plan for current and future safety concerns. This plan is also required if we are going to apply for federal and state grants. So we need to have this program in place. And our team, our traffic engineering team, is also going to be looking, as we're going into maintenance, we're planning for maintenance and capital projects, really looking through a lens of traffic safety as we plan for those programs and those projects. We're also going to be tracking implementation of safety programs and projects and sharing that information with the public so they know what we're doing and how we're doing it. And then establishing a traffic safety working group in our, across the city. And on the enforcement side of traffic safety, we do, our police department have added two officers to our Traffic Bureau to fill two vacancies, and they're exploring grant funding to support enforcing our traffic safety program. So our housing element update, not a priority that you all identified last February because we figured that we would have adopted and certified housing elements by now. We are still working on that. Your council adopted the housing element in January, and we're continuing to work with the California Department of Housing and Community Development for certification. We will be bringing those proposed changes to you in July as well to talk through. With that, questions?
Thank you very much, Carla, and to all of staff, because this obviously not only reflects our priorities as a council, but it also reflects everything, you all make it happen for us and the community. So questions from council members, I'll start with Mayor Protem. Do you have any questions about?
This is the second time you picked on me.
Questions, not comments, because we'll also then allow for public comment, and then we'll. Thank you.
You're welcome. When we were talking about the jobs and life balance, I am constantly struggling with being Walnut Creek-centric versus outside of Walnut Creek. For example, really good worker people live in Concord and Pleasant Hill and San Ramon and Danville. How do we balance that? It's almost a regional project versus a walnut, completely Walnut Creek-centric problem.
I'm phoning a friend on this one, either our Community Development Director or Assistant.
Anybody to rescue you, huh?
So staff members who think they might get a question, maybe you better move into the front row over here.
Hello, I'm Erica Panenbrand, Community Development Director. The answer is, we don't have the perfect balance, and you are entirely right. You know, we're part of an ecosystem, we're not an island. And as part of this effort, what we're trying to do is to get a better assessment with the high demand for housing in our community to preserve for both now and in the future our different commercial opportunities and so that we have economic vitality, and trying to assess what that would mean in the future. We don't know exactly what all those dimensions are right now, but it goes beyond just simply, there are different kinds of jobs, and there are different types of land use and property. So as part of this effort, we want to really explore that and help support economic development in our community, as well as our residents living here.
Good, thank you. And don't move, because actually you get to answer my only other question, which is when we're talking about permit streamlining. I know from what I've heard from the outside world who has to deal with this that frequently Walnut Creek gets blamed for the fact that there are many other entities that are involved in getting a building from point A to really being built, if it is, let's just say, a building. How are we trying to help our community work through the almost ridiculous other levels that they have to deal with?
So part of it is doing data-driven decision-making and analysis, so that trying to gather the data to be able to discern fact from fiction. So that's one thing. Second thing is that there are problems. Second thing is that there are problems, and to be able to recognize that and work with partnerships and so forth. We don't have all the answers right now. That's part of the exploratory process, but we are going to, our intention is to go about this systematically and quickly as we possibly can.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions?
We do not.
So before you walk away, Erica, let me check with my other council. Might as well do this, we'll sort, we'll do a little sorting order here. Any other questions that might be related to housing, community development, planning, So just to, I'm going to elaborate or ask you to elaborate on the job housing balance. We're not trying to balance job housing in this little micro ecosystem, the east side of Walnut Creek versus the west side of Walnut Creek. We're really talking about Walnut Creek as part of a regional and Bay Area economic engine.
I think that, you know, the concept there, there's the concept of job housing balance in the regional context, you know? It's like looking at jobs and housing just, you know, generally as a ratio. But I think what we're trying to deal here is get more texture. And so to be able to look at in the future, you know, sort of the now and then in the future, how much land capacity do we need for all these different types of uses?
Great, thank you. Councilmember Wilk, questions? Councilmember Darling?
Okay. I think this is probably a Carla question. We got a number of recommendations from the DEI task force, and I'm assuming that many of those recommendations will need some work before we understand what it would mean to implement them. Is that going to be on the job description for the new DEI person?
I think, yeah, this, that position really is going to be focused, and the funding that is proposed in the budget is really going to be focused on the things that are proposed here under this DEI priority. So, yeah, that position will be instrumental in implementing the, these things that are listed here or that were listed here.
But I think there's, the ones that are listed there, there were several things that came back to us from the task force, like, and we talked about the chief's advisory board as being a potential way to meet the interests, but we'll need to, we'll need somebody to be working to flesh some of those recommendations out before we can take any kind of action on them. Is that part of the work plan?
Yes. I think what we heard from the council was wanting CAP, the chief's advisory board, they're doing a lot of good work, and I think you all wanted them to come forward maybe once or twice a year to give you updates on what they're working on. And I believe the police chief has already planned to come forward with an update to you all in November before, you know, the chief's advisory board members rotate and where we, you know, the folks that are rotating off get to a chance to tell you all the good work that they've done, what they've accomplished, what they've learned, and then the new batch of members will start thereafter. So that is going to be included in this as well. That was, that was something you all said that you wanted under our DEI priority.
Okay. And I was just wondering, at some point, are we going, it would be useful for me to go through and understand how those recommendations crosswalk with the work plan that you guys have. So that would be good. On the crime prevention part of things, I know I've asked this question to the chief before, so it's nothing new, but is there going to be enough in there to help? I mean, this is kind of the intersection of law enforcement and DEI. We hear about people feeling profiled when they come to Walnut Creek. Is some of the crime prevention work going to be focused on helping stores understand best practices to prevent crime and just randomly trailing 12-year-olds?
Yes. Good evening, Jamie Knox, Chief of Police. Absolutely. We'll be very intentional as we develop this program, and we'll make sure that we include that as part of the program. This position will work closely with the business community, especially downtown businesses, and that's one thing that we will offer is doing site visits and employee educational sessions where not only it's just Q and A for them and the police department, but also explaining what best practices are and really what our values are here in this community.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. And then this is my last one, it's for you again. I'm assuming, you know, when we came up with our priorities, we talked about metrics being an important part of this. And so I'm assuming that as these work plans move forward, for example, on the permit streamlining, that we will end up developing metrics that say, you know, X number of permits issued and under blah, blah, blah. Is that expected to be part of this?
Yeah, so the intention is to really gather your feedback on these scopes of work, and then as we come back to you quarterly, so that our next update to you would be in the fall, our plan is to take your feedback on these scopes of work, build those detailed work plans that you've seen in the past that show how much progress have we made, how much further do we have to go on some of these things before they're complete? So that is the plan for the fall. So in that, you know, hearing that, yes, that was the intention of, certainly on most of these, is really, what are those things that we said we are going to accomplish? How quickly are we making progress to those things? We'll be updating you quarterly on those things.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Francois?
Just following up on the metrics concept. Let's see, how do I formulate this in the form of a question I need to ask?
Call Ken Jennings.
I know on the Economic Development Action Plan, there were two areas in particular, permit streamlining and kind of the office vacancy rates, that it seemed lent themselves probably rather nicely, more so than just your garden variety priority item, to some sort of metrics. Has there been further elaboration or refinement on kind of working that into the Economic Development Action Plan?
We are just beginning those discussions. So what we've been doing since, sorry, Teri Kilgore, Assistant City Manager, Economic Development Director, we've started the discussions within the team, we're starting the discussions with our partners. What I would say is that for the permit streamlining, the ED action plan is actually deferring to this activity as a council priority. So the action there is to support these efforts around streamlining, so I would defer to either Erica or Heather to comment on that. But on the other pieces, yes, we are starting to work out what those metrics would be. And like we talked about, there's some that will be sort of within our control and some that are not, but that we're hoping to influence. So we're having a lot of discussion around how do we show progress? What do we really want to track? And that will be part of what we come back with.
Great, thank you.
Just wanted to add to make sure we're all clear on this. So part of the discussion we had, as I recall, in the Economic Development Action Plan, and it's relevant here again tonight, is obviously there's a lot of interest and focus on permit streamlining, entitlement process and the like, which we hear loud and clear. At the same time, I do want to be upfront that we are focusing a lot of those resources on completing the housing element first. And so we are intentionally deferring some of that work until we can get the housing element over the finish line. As Carla had noted earlier, we had, as far as this work plan goes, anticipated the certification occurring sooner. So it's all hands on deck for the housing element. Hopefully, we get that wrapped up and certified soon, and then we can divert our attention to a lot of these streamlining and process improvement efforts.
Understood. And there were some sort of staffing issues in community development as well that need to get fulfilled in order to round out the permit streamlining, is that right?
Yes, correct. They have been running at about a 25% vacancy rate, but some key positions are in the midst of hopefully being filled here soon, within the next month or so, and allow a little time for those folks to come up to speed, and we'll be in a much better position.
Okay. And then maybe another one for Carla on, it's a little bit of an esoteric one, but have you given any thought, or could you give any thought, to kind of graphically depicting some of these programs, particularly, you know, like the local roadway safety plan, or even an update on turf fields, the pool, and the lights? You know, when we're at the farmer's market, we have somewhat dated graphics and visuals, and I think these are very topical and timely, and people would be really interested in that. And I know that's more of a comment, but I tried to ask it in the form of a question.
So to answer your form of a question, yes.
Thank you.
That's great question and feedback on how to communicate what we're doing with these priorities. I think that's a really good point, that although we do have these quarterly updates, people are always hungry for more information and what is going on over here and over there. So we'll be working certainly with our communications division on what is the best way to show this information, make it understandable, and integrate our communication through a DEI lens, so we can use some of the priority to do some of the priority work.
And I guess along those lines, it's, the Citizens Institute seems to me like it would be another, I know that that was a very popular program at one point, and it's a way to reach people that we don't necessarily or haven't traditionally been able to reach. Is there any thought of resurrecting that at some time in the near future?
There is, I suppose. It depends how you define near future. That would be the key.
It's open to interpretation.
It is, yes.
Staffing and staffing.
That is something that has been, you know, a focal point. There's a lot of benefits to that program in many different ways. We also had run an employee institute internally that's somewhat similar for new employees so that they get a, gain a much greater understanding of how the city operates. So those are on our to-do list. To be candid, I think it's unlikely in this calendar year, but we are thinking about the next calendar year, once we get hopefully our vacancy rate down. This is the type of program that we had to shelve, unfortunately, but we'd like to bring back.
Great, thank you.
Just looking to see if, I think most of my questions can be formed, can be phrased as comments, so I will defer my questions to comments because my colleagues had their questions answered, and so we'll take a few minutes and open it for public comment. Thank you very much. At this point, we are welcome to receive comments from the community. Does anyone here in the council chambers wish to give us comments? I'm looking around. Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to give us comments? Please raise your virtual hand, and we will call on you.
No hands raised on Zoom.
All right, then we will close public comment and bring it back to council. Mayor Protem, why don't you go first?
Again, thank you, staff.
Actually, let me do this one thing. Let's take this one priority at a time and do all of us, and then, because otherwise it's, and turns out to be a bit of a jumble for staff to keep notes. All right, so can you take the DEI? Any comments, suggestions?
No, I think it's well thought out. I, it's the sort of thing that you watch other places go rushing in and not have a plan. It's, I think, a good idea that we have a plan, that we keep our minds open, that just because they were recommendations from the DEI team, task force, it doesn't mean there aren't other good suggestions out there, and I don't want to slam the door on missing out a new opportunity. So I'm pretty excited that we're trying to ground it and get it running right from the start.
Councilmember Wilk?
I agree with Mayor Protem. These were categorized, I think, that easy to understand. I was wondering how we were going to look at DEI with this holistically as well as specifically, and I think you've done a good job on this, so thank you.
Councilmember Darling, you made some comments earlier in your questions. Any other comments?
No, I think I'm looking forward to bringing the expert in and having them help flesh this plan out as we have a staff person specifically working on DEI, and I look forward to seeing what they come up with.
Councilmember Francois?
Yeah, I too agree. I think that you did a nice job of taking the input from the task force and then recognizing that we need, and what was clear serving on the task force is that we need an internal expert to help guide us on this issue, you know, particularly in regard to training, but also in regard to some other best practices and kind of in looking back at the recommendations and looking holistically at all the priorities, especially in public safety, some of the ABLE training, the bystander training that the chief is passionate about getting committed to, and then de-escalation training continuing that, the community policing. I think it folds in to, they're cross-sectional, and I think it folds into some of the diversity work. So I'm looking forward to making progress on these items, this item.
I concur with my council colleagues. I think it's important that we have that staffing level to be able to support the internal work and the external work, and also be able to tackle any questions that we have as we move through this, such as, well, what about, what are the best practices out there? One little comment about city commission and committee representation and diversity, the most pressing one we have is women, because we're going to have a legal requirement in about three years to ensure that 50% of our commissions and committees are 50/50 represented with women, which doesn't really work very easily sometimes in an odd-numbered group. So we have to be mindful of what the legislative future is. Also, I'm curious how we're actually going to do the cultural and event work. Is it going to be institutionalized in arts and recreation, or are we going to just hope that it happens? And still looking forward to the rest of this month. Next item, Councilmember Wilk, you get to go first this time, economic development and job creation.
Well, again, I think this is well thought out. We're looking at, I mean, I think what we've already done with economic development and downtown next is terrific. I think that we're looking at the next, the future of that expanded even more, and I think that you've done a good job in putting all of this together. I did have one question, because in our previous strategy or priorities, it mentioned a discussion of a cannabis location or having that discussion. I know that we talked to staff about bringing that back. It was probably a little over six months ago, but in six months, and that's not here, and I don't know if that's intentional or not, but that's, I know, something that we'd been discussing before. Overall, when it comes to economic development and job creation, I think that we're right on the numbers with this.
Councilmember Darling?
You know, the economic development, that's going to be a great place for the metrics, and it will be, you know, useful both on the permit streamlining and then when, one of the things that, to think about as we go through and look at our processes is something that has been useful in other forums has been a specific staff person that is assigned to unstick things, because we could have a really great process, but sometimes things twist in the pipeline and people get stuck. But having an ombudsman-type person in the process is, it's, you could have a very clear process, but people could still get stuck. And as painful as the housing element completion will be, that really does fit in with the jobs housing balance, because that is going to be an important part of our economic plan. So thanks.
Councilmember Francois?
I think I made my comments earlier, but in terms of the metrics, but I, I think you've got the right focus here in terms of the four items.
I will go to Mayor Protem.
You've forgotten me this time. The concern I have is that we want to make sure that all our economic development reflects the changes in what's going to happen in our whole economic system. I'm not even, I'm not even going down the AI issue, but it is things that people aren't buying the same way they bought before, and how to enliven downtown so it isn't just a money grab, so that we balance it out with entertainment and other things. And I don't mean just food as entertainment. I think there are lots of things we need to do to recognize the economy isn't the old economy that was here 10 years ago.
I agree with the focus in here. I appreciate the comment about ombudsman in that permit streamlining, because it can be very different. Streamlining is really hard to metric, as much as it seems like it should be just easy to say it started on day one and it needs to end by day 29. That's the way the legislature thinks our lives should run, and there's a whole bunch of stuff that happens along the way where there are a multiplicity of routes that everything takes. So the, I would suggest in the improved jobs housing balance that we think creatively about existing commercial properties and how they could flexibly incorporate housing and jobs. And I don't mean housing over retail. I mean, do we have sites that actually would be better mixed use with housing sitting atop, particularly with office spaces that may become vacant? Do we need to repurpose in a mixed-use environment in that way and start looking at that opportunity, particularly given what density bonus law will allow us to do with height issues if there's housing in it? Environmental Sustainability and Climate Action Plan, Councilmember Darling, any thoughts? Anything, feedback?
This is one, actually, that I think when we talk about This is one actually that I think when we talk about metrics, that you guys have been doing a great job in the Climate Action Plan of tracking the progress on that. And that's, you know, I'm looking forward to seeing that continuing to work here and so, good job.
And we'll see it in two weeks. Councilmember Francois, any additional comments?
No.
Mayor Protem.
Yeah, you've done an impressive job so far and keep up the good work.
Keep it going.
And I look forward to seeing it in, you know, the next two meetings. We also have to be mindful that we set realistic near-term, midterm, and long-term goals and that we understand that so that we, we get it funded in order to be able to achieve the objectives. The next item, councilmember Francois, we'll start with you, parks, facilities, and other infrastructure.
You know, this one is, is exciting to me because I think it's going to have a tangible and positive impact on a lot of lives in Walnut Creek with the new aquatic center and community center, the turf fields, the lights at Tice. We heard it from a representative of the soccer club tonight. Certainly, I would like things to happen faster and I know that there's, we have to go through processes. But I think, I would just encourage us as a council and staff to look for ways that we could streamline the process as opposed to slow it down going forward. And probably particularly true with the aquatic center and the community center. So I think we're otherwise in good shape and look forward to getting the update on the architect and the community engagement strategy a little later this summer.
Mayor Protem.
So parks and rec is an economic generator in my mind against people. We are, I believe, a regional destination because our parks and our open space are entirely attractive to places and people from other places. I think you don't want to forget that it is an economic generator and, and there is a reason to hurry because we want to keep our edge in terms of being the place to go to, to enjoy the outside world or build your mind and enjoy the arts. I'm still waiting for the Leshaw Center to get that Tony I predicted 10 years ago.
Councilmember Wilk.
I think in the, in the mid-sixties, when a lot of these infrastructure were built, they were state-of-the-art. And now we've seen other communities start to become those state-of-the-art. And Walnut Creek becomes more of an afterthought in this regional area, especially when it comes to Heather Farm. So this puts us back at state-of-the-art, puts us back at the forefront. I think this will be the most tangible of all the priorities that people in the community will be able to see the progress of this and not just when it comes to the lights at Tice Valley or, or Heather Farm Aquatic Center and, and the Community Center. But they'll be able to see, see this as it goes along and everybody will be talking about this. So I look forward to this. I'd love to see it move as fast as possible, but understand that there's procedures that have to happen as well. And I'll look forward to, to seeing, yeah, to being there as part of the ribbon cutting and as part of the groundbreaking and everything else.
Councilmember Darling.
Yay. The only thing that I would add here is the community input process. We all want to go fast and so we have to keep that in mind as we put together the community input process. And I would build on that, that, and I really appreciated the way the community input was described because we have had a dozen years of community input. And I think we're at a stage where we know where it's going, we know what we're building, and the input is really refined down to some very, some refined questions that we haven't yet been able to ask. If we don't adhere to our assumptions and move forward on the assumptions, this will turn into scope creep and it won't get done for another 15 years. So I think we have to balance what we're considering here and I look forward to the, the process. But I also want to be mindful that last night the PROS Commission came to an agreement on recommending eight to 10 pickleball courts at Heather Farm. And so we also may be looking, after we get these initial two years worth of projects kind of working away, is how are we going to fund the future infrastructure projects that are maybe needed from a quality of life perspective?
Councilmember Francois, public safety and soc- did you start with?
I did.
You did. Then it's back to you, public safety and social wellness.
That's, that's such an important topic and something that the, the public has voted for. More, more confidence that we're as safe a city as can be, be had anywhere. And I think the plans that we're making make the, make it open and welcoming. And the police are, are going to be part of our community, not just the monitors of our community. So thank you for thinking about the intangibles as whether, as well as, as the hard stuff like new cars and, and new technology.
Councilmember Wilk, thoughts?
Yeah, this, this is important. It continues to be at the forefront of any of the surveys that we've done within the community. And I think that especially when it comes A3 with social wellness and, and the public safety that we've already put out there and that we're already continuing to recruit for and between high-def cameras and, and everything else that we have out in the community that we're looking to be able to improve upon, I think this, this hits the right tone and the right note that we're trying to get across in community policing and wanting to make sure that the public feels comfortable, safe, welcome, and that we are a safe community. So, thanks.
Councilmember Darling.
I think this plan hits the sweet spot because public safety polls really well, but people mean different things when they think of public safety. Some people think of public safety meaning to keep the guy from stealing your bike out of the garage. And other people think public safety means helping the homeless person. And other people think public safety means getting rid of the homeless person. So this work plan right now spans the variety of approaches that are going to really be needed to address the broader concern of making sure everybody feels welcome and safe and their stuff is too.
Councilmember Francois.
I think this is a very important priority. I think it, you know, the public told us as much when we went to community survey results for Measure O. I'm glad to see appropriately that Measure O funds are going towards additional resources in, in the public safety realm. You know, I think what we've all learned that is that, and I think councilmember Darling spoke to this, is that public safety is coupled with that social wellness component and that there are some, what had been traditionally law enforcement roles that are better handled by others. And I think the A3 program is, is up and it'll be, you know, running and full, up to full speed at some point soon, hopefully. And, you know, coupled with the de-escalation work that the police is doing, the crisis intervention training with other, other agencies so that we can have someone on staff 24/7 if a police officer responds to a mental health call, that they have the specialized training. I also appreciate the chief's focus on, on that bystandership training. I think that's critical and something that more departments need to be doing nationwide. And really appreciate the focus and the emphasis on crime prevention. And I think that's what our, our public here is, is looking for. And I'm glad that we're moving towards delivering that for them. And finally, the, the roadway safety plan at the farmer's market kind of, I get a lot of questions about traffic. Smadar could attest to it because usually on Sunday or Monday morning, I'm emailing her. And she's in, you know, and we, we saw this with the capital budget last month, that they're on their way to developing a plan to address a lot of the questions that we're getting. And that's exciting too. And that's going to make a tangible and positive difference in our community. So I'm looking forward to seeing that be developed and implemented.
Thank you very much. While this is fifth in the list, it is not fifth in the priorities. These are all equally weighted priorities. We should try to figure out a way that alphabetical order is, this is alphabetical order, not priority order when we list them. So this is important and it reflects a true balance that many communities don't have the opportunity to do, whether, whether it's caring for those who are unhoused and getting them the services they need to preventing serious crime in our neighborhoods or in downtown. So thank you very much. Do you need anything else from us to be able to move forward?
I do want to put the plug in for Matt's things for the farmer's market.
Certainly, yes. How we communicate about all of these different things is something that is absolutely the top of mind.
So one of the things I would suggest in, is that photos rather than icons. Photos make it real. Drawings make it, you know, diagrams make it real. Icons make it just ethereal, academic, Harvard. So we can think of some ideas on even maybe making a FORP. We can do one of those banners, we can make a FORP page. You know, we can talk to the banner because that would be great. Those banners are out of date.
Right.
Great. Thanks so much. I don't think we, we provided our feedback we don't need. We're going to keep moving. You okay? All right. The last item on our agenda tonight is a public hearing on the preliminary review of a proposed general plan amendment and rezone to allow a two-story commercial building at 1200 Rossmore Parkway, application number Y 23-24. I will start by asking my council colleagues to report any ex parte contacts.
None for me.
None for me.
None.
None.
And none for me either. I guess they couldn't find us. All right. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, thank you, mayor and councilmembers. My name is Jessica Gonzalez, Associate Planner.
Be sure you're speaking right. Yeah.
Sorry. My name is Jessica Gonzalez, Associate Planner, and I will be presenting the potential general plan amendment to allow commercial and retail at 1200 Rossmore Parkway. So before I get into the proposed concept, I just want to clarify that this is not a project review or application for a project. What is before you is a preliminary application which provides the council basically an early review of a general plan amendment request. And so as stipulated in the municipal code, the council can either deny the proposed amendments if the council believes that the proposal should not move forward or you may direct staff to process the amendment. So jumping into the proposed concept location, the site is located at 1200 Rossmore Parkway and the corner of Tice Valley Boulevard and Rossmore Parkway. The 1.35 acre site is currently developed with a one-story building, approximately 5,000 square feet in size and formerly occupied by Bank of America. As shown on the aerial, the site is surrounded by a variety of uses, including retail and commercial, medical and professional offices, as well as community facilities. And so here is the existing site plan and massing study of the existing building just to provide some context and understanding of existing development. So moving into the general plan, the existing general plan designation is office. This designation allows, allows administrative, professional, and general business offices with retail generally prohibited outside of the core area. And I'll just clarify that the proposed concept location is outside of the core area. In terms of what is being proposed, the applicant is requesting a general plan amendment to change the existing land use designation from office to general retail to allow retail uses and commercial uses at the site. So moving into zoning, the parcel is zoned planned development or PD 1140. A bank is the only allowed use at the PD currently. In addition to the allowed use, the PD also establishes a maximum height of two stories. As far as what is being proposed or requested, the applicant is proposing to rezone the site to a new PD based on the existing community commercial zoning district with those existing, allowing those existing land uses at the site which would allow for retail and commercial. As far as the proposed concept, what is being proposed is a retail or commercial use at the site. The new development would either include a new building potentially or potentially just adding onto the existing building. The building would be potentially one to two stories with a maximum height of 30.5 feet and a .50 FAR maximum is proposed where the community commercial district allows a maximum of .30. So they're requesting, the community commercial zoning district as the kind of base template for the project, for the PD, but with an increase in FAR. And so in order to depict the differences and potential development at the site and change in FAR, the applicant has included a massing study as the concept plans. The site and elevation shown on the screen depict the potential massing and size of a potential building at the size built at .30% FAR. And so this site plan and elevation depicts the potential massing and building size at the site at a .50 FAR, just to kind of give some context in terms of differences in size. So as described in the report, the concept requires a general plan amendment to change the general plan designation from office to general retail to allow retail and commercial uses at the site. The concept also requires a rezone to allow any use other than bank. And the proposed PD, as I mentioned, would be based on the existing community commercial zoning use allowances and standards with two requested modifications, one being to the FAR and the other one being to the height. But tonight, what is before you with the pre-application is really just a review of the request to change the general plan designation from office to general retail. And so with that, staff would recommend that city council review the two available options on the screen, which would either be to provide preliminary comments on the proposal and direct staff to process the requested general plan amendment or to deny the application. And with that, that does conclude my presentation. I'm available for any questions and the applicant team is also available.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, do we have any questions for staff as opposed to, we could go ahead and listen to the applicant so that we can then figure out who's the best to answer our questions? Councilmember Wilk?
Thank you, Jessica. Just a question, how many other banks are in that area, in that, in that shopping district area?
Yes, so my understanding is the Rossmore Shopping Center directly across the street has about three banks and financial institutions, looking at our.
So there are three banks and then one mortgage institution.
Great, thank you.
Mayor Protem, did you have any questions? So let us have the applicant. Good evening. Thank you so much for being so patient with what must have been a fascinating evening. You'll have up to 15 minutes.
Oh, thank you. It was excellent evening. Eric Erickson with Colliers, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Thomas Boxum. And we're really pleased, actually really pleased that we came following the, the last session, which were the priorities and the scope because this, this, this is a perfect example of a piece of property that when we came across it, it was, it was a bank branch for 50 years and we just don't bank in branches that big ever anymore. And they're all smaller. The bank branch typically now is about 1,500 to 2,000 feet and it sits inside of a strip mall. And so when we saw this piece of property, we, we thought, well, it's, it's own bank. What else could we do? And are there other uses that we could do with the property? And, and as we explored the market, we just realized there was just fewer and fewer things you could do with the property because of the zoning. So my specialty is office and I've been transacting office leasing and sales here in the area for about 26 years. And this has been a paradigm shift with the pandemic and what things have changed and how we use office space. And so with the general plan being office right now, I just don't know if we'll see a lot of demand for that property, even if we were to change the zoning from its current PD to more of a general office zoning. The current vacancy for office is sitting about 22%. We expect it to grow. There's going to be further contraction in the banking industry and we're going to see some of that in the regional banking, probably. And we're going to see some of that in the regional banking, probably see some more jobs come back and vacancies here in Walnut Creek. With that, there are several bank, large bank branches of similar size that are now vacant. In addition to Rossmore, you have a US bank that's across the street. We're expecting it back. Well, there's another US bank branch on North Main Street, 2890 North Main Street that is currently being occupied by an office tenant, but it will be coming back to the market next year. And we're expecting Chase Bank to give back at least two branches in town over the next, next 12 to 18 months. So we're definitely going to see, you know, those sort of ground floor spaces change in Walnut Creek. And with that, you know, we, we look closely at this site and this site talks retail. It's probably going to have some sort of mixed commercial component to it. It'll have probably a takeaway restaurant. It may have a bank branch, a small bank branch. It, it most likely will have some sort of medical office use and maybe a little retail store. But we are proposing here to the council that you accept our, our request for the zoning amendment and go work with the planning commission and staff to come up with a game plan for that site that, you know, the city can be proud of for the next 50 years. And with that, I'd happy to take any questions you have.
Councilmember Francois.
Thank you very much, Mr. Erickson.
Thank you.
In terms of the, I know it's just a concept at this point, but it, it sounds like you're anticipating multiple tenants in a, not a strip mall, but a kind of a multi-tenant, a single multi-tenant building? And is it, have you done the math in terms of figuring out the parking and that you can make that work at a .5 FAR? Under our current parking standards?
Ah, okay. So that's a great question. So with the current site design, there's 30 parking stalls. And what we think is keeping this current parking site design, we could just expand the existing building. Maybe get to about 9,000 feet. Maybe we could put some parking behind. We actually haven't studied it because we, we wanted to wait for the zoning change or at least to know we were moving down the path to getting a zoning change. Because the smaller tenants just won't wait. They won't wait 15 months to go through a zoning change. So we, we need to sort of get the land use component done first. Under the massing studies, the .3 and .5 FAR, and .5 FAR, if you will, that, that is the existing maximum density under the current general plan office. That's as I understand it. The, with those two elements, we would be looking at a completely new structure and probably do something to redo the site and the site design with possibly some subterranean parking. And that would be a pretty bold project. But right now, no, we're not planning anything like that.
And then have you given any thought in terms of the uses and how they would be compatible or synergistic with the Rossmore Shopping Center?
Totally, totally, yeah. You know, some uses may appear to duplicate. There could be another pizza restaurant that wants to go in there or another taquerie that wants to go in there. But, you know, I, I sort of imagine that we're going to see businesses and services that are going to benefit both the Rossmore community and the residential community that's there and growing.
I think that's all I had for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Darling?
Thanks. So looking at it, I think Councilmember Francois already answered, asked my questions about parking. The Rossmore Shopping Center adjacent to it, I know we had to, they came in and originally we're going to do all retail and ended up doing some medical office in there. So it sounds like your plan would include, would allow something like a medical office in there with the other uses?
Yes.
If it wasn't possible to do 100% retail?
Right. So Rossmore Shopping Center had a dentist. Rossmore Shopping Center had, had some vacancy. And at the 1220 Rossmore Parkway building owned by Golden Rain Foundation, it was a almost 30,000 foot building. John Muir had a, had a facility there and they downsized. They actually right-sized to their, to their, to their market. And they went at about 11,000 feet into the shopping center. There is still some office demand in that market, probably some limited medical, but it would be more service oriented. So yes, we could see another dentist go, want to come into that market, maybe, maybe a small dermatologist. But we're not talking about large, a large office component. It will service the local market there.
Okay. And so the class, the zoning that you're looking at is just one that will give you maximum flexibility?
Yes. It's, it's, it's really the only zoning ordinance we could find that we could adopt. I mean, you'd still need to go through a use permit process to have any office in that location under that CC zoning.
Okay. Thanks. That's all I have.
Councilmember Wilk? Any questions?
I think the only question I would have is, and everything that I've heard makes, makes perfect sense here. What would you say is the general types of customers that come into banks in person now? I mean, again, there's a huge, a huge push for all of us to do things online. And of course, using ATMs has, has really brought down the amount of foot traffic into banks. But what do you typically see as the type of traffic that comes in?
You know, you're talking about shop owners who have, do deal in cash and they're going to come in with a cash bag and check, checks and meet with their banker. So that cash management side. I think people setting up accounts and needing customer service. There is still customer service component to the banks that people want to do in person. Especially when they change banks, people, you know, consumer banks, people will come in for that reason. I don't particularly see this as a business banking branch. Business banking branches would stay here, right here downtown. This, this little corridor right here is very popular with the business banks. And, and possibly go in for a mortgage and to discuss, you know, various instruments to make small investments.
Would you see the demographics play into it some as, as well? That older people typically would go into a bank branch?
I would, I would think, I would think that sure, the, some older folks would, would prefer to go into the branch and have a personal relationship with a teller and make a deposit or talk to the banker.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. A couple of questions. The massing study, the two-story was just a massing study. It would be, could be, it would be articulated.
Oh, for sure.
In design. I, well, you never know who's watching and, you know, I'll get home tonight. My husband will go, why would you allow that in our neighborhood? Well, I'm not. And then this isn't just about a bank for the future because that is a, it's significant. This is about a variety of ground floor retailer office and a second story office, which is similar to what's further west, I guess, on Tice Valley Boulevard, closer to, between, beyond Rossmore Parkway. There's this two-story retail office complex.
Yes. There's a, there's a, there's an office complex. It's, it's almost like a two-story retail center where you, you drive down and you've got a physical therapist and two pin construction. And then on top, you've got a Wells Fargo wealth management branch and some other services, a dentist. It would be similar to that. I mean, in concept, it could be similar to that, yeah.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions before? One more?
Were you, are you, you're not proposing any live entertainment, dancing, or late night alcohol sales?
Because he lives in the neighborhood, as do I, and we would really.
My wife, I have to account to my wife when I get, no. The reason I ask is because that zoning district seems to allow those either permitted as a rider with a use permit. And I think we'd want to give a little thought to the planned development permit and the uses that were allowed there.
I mean, the, the, we, we took a rough stroke to the CC zoning. I mean, as, as we've come closer to this and, and into this hearing tonight, you know, there probably are a few nuances we'd want to see changed in the zoning text. But again, that's something we can work on together with the planning commission and you can voice your comments to them and we can just work through it for sure. The, I'll tell you, the entertainment that we've fielded of interest in the marketplace has been families. Families that want to see something that they could do up there. Because there are families up there.
All right. So we're going to close this and see if there's any public comment. I don't see anyone virtually.
No, there are no speakers.
No speakers. All right. Then we will bring it back to council to see if there are any further questions of staff. All right. Did you have a question?
I just want to ask maybe a follow-up question about the parking and, and maybe this is getting too granular now, but my quick read of the CC, of retail general uses is one to 250. So that would require significantly more parking than is there now. And kind of how, does staff have a concern with that at the proposed FAR?
We haven't really researched into whether or not the, the site can support the additional parking in the FAR. I think it, you know, it's going to really depend on the exact use and the mix of uses because our parking ordinance does stipulate, you know, depending on the exact uses, there's a different parking ratios for that.
Okay.
So is the office use a different parking standard than the retail?
Yes. But I believe, so the current PD.
It's one to 250.
That might be for the separate PD. I think for the adjacent PD, it stipulates the parking ratio. So sorry about that. There is no parking ratio for this specific PD. So it'd be based on the uses.
Okay.
All right.
No more questions?
Councilmember Darling, Councilmember Wilk, Mayor Protem. Let's talk what we want to do.
Councilmember Francois. I'm going to rely on you here.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think that the site is sorely in need of redevelopment. Thank you for being willing to kind of bring this forward. And I, I'm in, in general, in, you know, concept, very supportive of this proposal. I think the thing, the nuance I think that needs to be worked out here is, is probably the FAR and the parking and how those relate. And, and to get a little more granular in terms of the, the uses than the CC. And I, but I think we're in alignment on that. So I think it could be a, a positive addition to the area. I know the, the shopping center across the street has started to build out in accordance with the changes to the PD zone we made there and has had a very positive impact on that center. And I can imagine, not sure what they were thinking when they did a PD allowing one use back in the day. But this, I think, could allow a lot more flexibility. And I, I did like the comment that, that medical office could be in the mix too because I think that that could be a use, given that it's right next door and the, and the area in general could be a use that's in demand. So, yeah, I'm, I'm generally supportive and I think we'll, we'll just need to be careful in terms, in terms of some of the details as the project moves forward.
Would you like to make a motion?
Yes. I move that we.
Page two.
Well, we did provide preliminary comments on the proposal. So I move that we direct staff to process the requested amendment of the general plan.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
My second.
So we have a motion and a second. Further comments? Councilmember Darling?
The one thing is as you're looking, you know, I support the, the concern about looking at parking and making sure it works and remember your audience. Those are door dingers. And so make sure that we have parking that works for the Rossmoreans.
I'm going to take offense since that's my neighborhood as well. But I guess that explains my door dings.
No, it was a very specific thing when we were doing the shopping center is making sure that we had enough handicap parking and enough room for people to navigate. So I'm supportive.
Mayor Protem? You've made the second, so you're supportive.
Yeah, I thought that did my job. But yeah, I, I, banking is, is not, like I'm trying to explain to the rest of the world. The world isn't going to be the same going forward and we have to adapt on so many different levels. And so, yes, I support thinking creatively and this is an opportunity to prevent, I can't even think of the word, but old dying buildings just sitting there. So yeah, thank you for taking on this project.
Councilmember Wilk? Any final comments?
Yeah, I, I agree with the change as well. Like banking is changing as we've, as we've mentioned. I think the fact that there are still several other banks that are in that general area, I think, is a help because I do agree that, that senior adults tend to want to be able to go into branches directly. My mother does, for example, and she wants that connection and, and that assuredness. So I think that we've got that sorted out. So in this particular instance, I think that we do need to be more flexible in zoning for additional uses that are in underutilized areas. If a couple of areas downtown I'd like you to look at. But anyway, thank you. I, yeah, I'm certainly supportive of this.
They are. I'm supportive as well. I wish the Bank of America was still there because that was my branch. But oh, well, life moves on. I now know how to take a photograph of a check and submit it electronically. Thank, thank you very much. We'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Francois?
Hi.
Mayor Protem has.
Hi.
Councilmember Darling?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilk?
Aye.
Mayor Silva?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
That concludes our business meeting this evening. Thank you all very, very much and we will see you on June 20th.